The Monday, December 16 meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen invite you all to rise and join the board as we recite the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Brent Putnam. I'm chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Pat Flynn, Selectman, Town Manager Julian Susso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, Selectman Kevin Murphy, and Selectman Rebecca Moffett, excuse me. Some procedural announcements before we begin. If you have a cellphone or some other device that might spontaneously make noise, we ask that you turn it off or silence it for your duration with us this evening. If you choose to speak, and there will be opportunities for public comment this evening, please wait to be recognized by the chair. When you are recognized, please come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean the general public or our recording secretary does. And please direct all your comments directly through the chair. If you choose to leave before the meeting adjourns, please remember that the meeting has not adjourned, and please do so quietly so that we can continue our business. If you would like to record the meeting, you may do so via audio. You simply have to announce that you're doing so. If you'd like to record it using video, you need to get permission from the board. So at this time, is there anyone who would like to announce audio recording or request permission for a video recording? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the first item on our agenda, which are the announcements and proclamations. Representative Vera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening to recognize on behalf and with the Veterans Council, an organization in Falmouth that has been integral, not only to our veterans, which is why we're recognizing them tonight, but also to our young people, and that is the Falmouth Elks. And at this time, I'd like all of the representatives of the Falmouth Elks, if you could come forward, please. And Ahmed Mustafa, are you with us? Chairman of our Veterans Council. You know, as a young man growing up in Falmouth, I had an opportunity to work closely with the Elks in high school, working with them on Flag Day and working with them after our Veterans Day ceremonies and after our Memorial Day ceremonies. We'd go down to Deacon's Pond for the final naval observation, and then we would go back to the Elks for a coalition. And not only have the Elks been integral on those particular days, but they have been there for the community day in and day out. And sometimes it's not even on a program. It's not on something you read in the enterprise. It's when there are veterans or their families in our community that have a need, a need that we can't really place the best place to have it met. And through those informal networks and communications with the leadership of the Elks Club, they'll find a way to work together and to be able to solve that need and to meet that need for our families. And so could all of the members of the Veterans Council please stand for a moment? I want you to be recognized. Let's have a round of applause for the members of our Veterans Council. Through those informal networks between members of the council and members of the Elks, so they're able to continue that day-to-day work that is so important. And so with that, tonight, I would like to, on behalf of the Veterans Council and with the chairman of the Veterans Council, issue a proclamation for integrity, honor, and service awarded to the Falmouth Elks Lodge 2380 in great appreciation of your outstanding dedication and contributions. Your efforts have made a world of difference to the Falmouth Veterans Community. Thank you, the Falmouth Veterans Council.
I would just like to say, my name is David Goines. I'm the exalted ruler this year of the Falmouth Lodge 2380, and this is a great honor due to the hard work of the man standing right here, Mr. Simchuk, also Ahmad Mustafa, and our many volunteers. We participate a lot, like you said, in everything. One of my biggest joys is doing the ceremonies at the Bourne Cemetery and the Falmouth Cemetery. And once again, we're very honored and thank you.
Thank you. All right, we also, moving along with the announcements, we have some committee openings. The Affirmative Action Committee has three openings. The Board of Assessors has one. The Bike Race Committee has one. The Building Code Board of Appeals has two positions. The Cable Advisory Committee has two positions. The Cape Light Compact, there is one alternate position. The Conservation Commission has two alternate positions. The Council on Aging has one position. The Cultural Council has six positions. The Design Review Committee has two alternate positions. The Commission on Disabilities has two positions. The Finance Committee has one position. The Historic Districts Commission has one full-time and one alternate position that are vacant. The Historical Commission has a full position vacant. Human Services has three positions. Retirement Board has one position. The Solid Waste Advisory Committee has one vacancy. The Substance Abuse Commission has four vacancies. The Town Building Committee, three. The Transportation Management Committee has three vacancies, and the Zoning Board of Appeals has one alternate vacancy. Are there any other announcements from the board? Oh, and while we'll be discussing it later this evening, but we do have a vacancy for the representative, for Falmouth's representative to the Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority.
The deadline for all of those has been posted as December 27 of this year.
Thank you. Any further announcements from the board or the Town Manager's office? Okay, next item on our agenda, public comment. This is a 10-minute period devoted to you, the public. Each individual has a maximum of two minutes timed by our vice chair. We ask that you adhere to the speaker's policy, a copy of which is on the door, and I saw a hand go up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Zavala, President of the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. I'm stepping forward to say thank you to our Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager for their assistance and the department heads, the Chief of Police and Ray Jack and his departments that helped us in the Holidays by the Sea Weekend to make not only the Christmas parade, but that entire three-day period such a success. And I also wanted to thank the Falmouth Road Race Incorporated. They were our community partner, and because of their efforts and their contribution and their grant, we were able to create this lovely brochure that covered all of the activities of that weekend. There were two sponsors that stand out, of course, and those are the sponsors for the 50th Annual Christmas Parade, the Bank of Cape Cod, and the Seacrest Beach Hotel. There are a lot of others that contributed to it, and we'll be publishing their names and saying our thanks to them on the pages of the coastlines. But I felt it was important to step forward and thank Mr. Susso and Ms. Harper for their contribution in making this 50th anniversary parade such a huge success. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Mark Cool, Precinct 6. First of all, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to extend my best and warmest wishes to the board and their efforts throughout the year, but especially during this holiday season. So as to bring the board up to speed on what I'd like to comment on, December 2nd, two Tuesdays ago, as of tomorrow, I attended a State House hearing of the Telecommunications Utilities and Energy Committee. A bill was presented, and the bill number was House 2987, presented and originated by our representatives Madden and Vera in town. The bill is to provide financial assistance to towns experiencing adverse effects from wind turbine operations. The Town Manager, as well as the Board of Selectmen, have made it clear that Falmouth fits into this category. So my concern and my question, without the representation there, because I was very disappointed that there wasn't any official representation on the town's behalf, could you, as a board, provide clarification of the town's position on this potential opportunity that Mr. Vera and Mr. Madden are trying to provide the town?
The public comment period is for you. It is not for us to respond because these are items not on the agenda.
Because I think, I think the town's confused, or at least I am, and a lot of the neighbors are. If we are in such peril financially, here's an opportunity, and I wonder if we're pursuing that opportunity as strongly as negotiating with other state agencies for our debt obligations.
Well, we'll look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. All right, and that concludes our public comment period. Next item on our agenda are the minutes. We have the minutes of November 20, public session.
I move the minutes of the November 20 public session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain. I was not present for that meeting.
And I move the minutes of the executive session on November 20, 2013, and not released to the public.
Second.
Motion and a second.
I just have one correction on the executive session. I'm not sure if it's essential, but that the meeting was held in the Town Manager's office, not in the old wire.
The executive session.
The executive session.
Okay, so to approve the minutes as amended, then?
Yes, to approve the minutes as amended and not to release.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I am abstaining. I was not present. And we have the December 2nd public session.
I approve the December 2nd public session meeting minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None. And I have here December 2nd executive session, but I don't see that in our package.
Those were provided to the board in your ob boxes just late today. You may not want to.
The orange folder.
Yes. May I wish to delay action on those until your next meeting.
No, what I have here was public session. All right, so. Yeah, we'll have to come back to that one, then. All right. All right, next item on the agenda, the summary of actions. I'll read through these, and if anyone wants to hold one, please let me know. Approved Town Manager attendance at the 2014 Annual Massachusetts Municipal Association Meeting in Boston. Vote clarification regarding Eco Toilet Incentive Program reimbursements. Item 3 is to vote to approve 20 Shore Street mortgage in note for the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Item number 4, letter of support, protect Buzzards Bay from oil spills. Item 5, authorized Town Manager to submit clarifying comments on our final environmental impact report, comprehensive wastewater management plan, and targeted watershed plan.
Pages 1 through 5.
Second.
Okay, items 1 through 5, motion to approve. And a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, and next up, we have some treasurer's notes. Mr. Sussa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I'll welcome some comments from Finance Director Jennifer Petit introducing the concepts. Jennifer?
Good evening. As I brief you on our bond anticipation notes, we'll send the paperwork around as we normally do to be signed, so we can get that out to our financial advisors. On Wednesday, there is a memo and supporting documentation and a suggested vote in your packet. On Wednesday, we went out to bid on $10.6 million in bond anticipation notes with $9.9 million due in a year, and $700,000 is due in six months. I'd just like to note that that $700,000 is part of the operating budget, and we will pay that off in six months. And that is part of the policy of keeping our debt ceiling up, because when we voted the budget, we voted 1.7 million in FY '14. And as you'll note, that we received an extremely low interest rate of 1.1798 percent, and the market is doing very well, and AA+ bond rating was reaffirmed. And just for the public's notice, we borrowed a million for road and sidewalk improvements, a million for the comprehensive wastewater management projects. That was Article 17 of the various projects that the town has been working on. The wastewater design, 3.1 million. Water treatment plant design, 3 million. And then the energy management services contract that we voted in November, 2.5 million. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions from the public?
Okay, thank you. So we'll circulate the paperwork around as we normally do.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
I do believe we do need a motion to approve the bonds. We have the. The suggested language here.
You suggest we remove these motions? That the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time.
I think we actually have to go back to the first paragraph.
We do need to actually, because we have, as a bid process, we have to approve the actual bid.
Chairman, I vote, I move to approve the sale of $700,001 Series A General Obligations Bond Anticipation Notes, known as the Series A Notes, of the town dated December 19, 2013, and payable June 19, 2014, to Eastern Bank at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $2,107. Further, to approve the sale of $9,900,01.25 Series B General Obligation Bond Anticipation Notes, the Series B Notes, and together with the Series A Notes, the notes, of the town dated December 19, 2013, payable December 19, 2014, to Eastern Bank at par and accrued interest plus a premium of $105,949.80. Then in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated December 4, 2013, and as revised on December 10, 2013, and a final official statement dated December 11, 2013, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Also, the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15, Chapter 2-12, in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. And that we authorize and direct the Treasurer to establish post issuance of federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the Treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes. And further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer shall be and hereby are authorized to take in any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
Second. Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. We're still passing those down. We'll have a brief interlude here, folks. While we sign, there's a number of documents that has to have to have our signatures.
Well, I would just say to Jennifer and Susan, it's a great job on the interest rates. Those are really well. I haven't seen anything like that lately.
Mr. Fineran?
Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. In the presentation, I heard the interest rate was 1.798 percent or some such, which is a decent rate of interest. But then, in the reading of the terms, I thought I heard there was a $100,000 premium. On 10 million, wouldn't that raise it another 1 percent? Is that the actual case, or I'm just confused on that?
In the board's packet in the memo, it's the net interest rate of 0.1798. That includes the premium. The premium reduces the gross rate of interest to the net rate of interest, and we award the bonds on the net rate of interest, so that premium is included in the 0.1798.
Thank you.
I just want to acknowledge our bond rating. I think there is something that happens in a town when you have an excellent bond rating, and I give everyone credit in your office that keeps track of that, and I think is to be very proud of that.
Thank you. My nerves, look at my nerves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think it's important to follow up with Becky, since the town was just notified that we have a AA+ bond rating once again this year. So I think it is the work of the entire financial group, as well as Town Manager's office and everybody that participates in this government, to be able to have had the discipline to continue to keep our structure moving forward. But with the fact that we have the ability to borrow at such a low interest rate is a testimonial to the discipline that this community has been able to show and achieve over the last several years.
Is that it for the notes?
Yep.
All right. Thank you all. All right, next item on our agenda, the appointment of the Town Accountant. Mr. Susso, you have a recommendation for us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to say it's been my great pleasure over the last several months to work directly with Acting Town Accountant Vicky Rose, who has done an excellent job working with her colleagues on the financial team, including Finance Director Jennifer Petit, who is the direct supervisor of the Town Accountant position, as I believe the board is aware. This is a very important position in the town. It is an appointment made directly by the Board of Selectmen. And as you've seen in writing, I've given my recommendation to you, and I'm very pleased to recommend your consideration of appointment of Vicky Rose as the Town Accountant for the town of Falmouth. You have a copy of Vicky's resume and related materials, and we look forward to working with Vicky in that continued and enhanced capacity. And be happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Jennifer and Vicky are both here this evening, of course, and if you may have any questions of them, I certainly would welcome that as well.
And for the board's edification, as well as the general public, the Town Accountant is essentially the town's auditor, and it is a role that is appointed by the board. As noted, although Ms. Petit supervises the Town Accountant, it is the board's appointment to make and to remove the Town Accountant if necessary. So it's an important check and balance in the town's financial structure. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just if Vicky would stand forward and introduce herself and give 10 words, just to put it in public out there for us to hear.
Hi, I'm Vicky Rose, and I just want to thank Julian for this opportunity, and I also have to thank Jennifer. And I also look forward to working with all of you, and if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Come by. Come by.
Thank you very much. And again, as noted, the accountant is appointed by us. Essentially, she reports to us. So the previous Town Accountant, Ms. Alwart, was always very good about acknowledging that fact. And if I ever had any requests, she was always very good about providing me with information. And I would imagine Ms. Rose would do the same, so.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Vicki.
Thank you. Thank you.
Since we've already applauded, I'll still go ahead and make the move that we appoint Vicki Rose to the position of full Town Accountant for the town of Falmouth for the terms that we have in front of us.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This is a three-year term. And so in three years, the board will be coming back to revisit this appointment, so. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Congratulations. Next item on our agenda, to request to affirm the appointment of an affirmative action officer. Mr. Suso.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. This is an appointment a little bit different from the one that the board just made directly. This is my request to affirm, of the board, that you affirm, in this case, my appointment of the affirmative action officer for the town of Falmouth. And I'm appointing Denise Coleman, who is our current Personnel Director. Denise has been with us for over a year and is doing an excellent job in working with all of us in the town administration and showing great leadership in organizing and leading that very important department. Among the duties which I had discussed with Denise for some time, with potential of being assigned this important function, the board has received a copy of the basic job description of the affirmative action officer, and I know that you are all familiar with that. In the past, that has been a role fulfilled by Mr. George Spivey. It has been filled on both the town, part-time, on a part-time basis for the town, part-time basis for the school department. In this case, Denise will be serving us, obviously, on the town side, and that is the appointment that I would be making, subject to your concurrence and vote to affirm. Denise is, of course, with us here this evening, and I'm sure she'd welcome the chance to say hello or answer any questions that you may have.
And then this is Mr. Suso's appointment, but the board must ratify it as this is a department head-level position.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening. Denise Coleman, the Personnel Director for the town. Just wanted to let you know that I am honored to be able to serve as the EEO affirmative action officer for the town. I look forward to being able to provide quality programs and services and ensure that we do continue to offer equal employment to all of our employees. So thank you. Any questions?
I just have two questions to clarify. One is, I want to make sure that, is there any conflict between having the Personnel person and the affirmative action officer, same, in the same person?
Great question, Selectmen Jones. Actually, it's a reasonably common occurrence. It's not required, of course, but when an organization like ours has an individual in Denise's capacity as Personnel Director with the broad experience that she brings, very well qualified to serve in this capacity, it's quite common in situations like that. And that, I'm very pleased to make that recommendation and appointment as a result.
And a second is, from a salary point of view, does this end up being a sum of two salaries?
Actually, you know, this is, the position that has become vacant as a result of retirement of Mr. Spivey is not being filled. There were some additional duties, mostly on the school department side, as I have noted, but this is a role and an assignment that Denise will be assuming with no adjustment in her current compensation.
Well, I just wanted to say, I think it's an excellent decision to move that function into personnel. I know, I was the affirmative action officer for the town of Plymouth when I was the HR Director. And these really are human resource functions. And it makes it so much easier if you're the Personnel Director or the HR Director because you know the employees and they know you. And if situations come up in the workplace, you have a great understanding of the workplace, what the job is, what individual people do. And it, not with no, no aspersion on George Spivey, because I think he did a great job, but I think in terms of the employee, it makes it a lot easier for them to relate to someone that they know who really understands the workplace and can help them when they, if they have situations like that that arise, to deal with affirmative action or any of the other issues that occur in the workplace where the employee needs advice from someone. So I think it's great, and I'm glad you are taking it on.
Thank you, Pat. I agree, they do go hand in hand, so.
Yeah.
I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Murphy?
I'd just like to say that the town really gets its bang for buck, will be high due. It was evident at town meetings, the way you were able to speak in regard to contracts, speak in regard to how we're reorganizing our government. This is an additional role that you've taken off. I take my hat off to you. I take my hat off to the Town Manager's Office. I appreciate, and sometimes that's seldom said, that we appreciate the work that our department heads do, and in this case, we appreciate your work. I would also say that I think the title, her current title, I'm not talking about any, any change in her remuneration, is antiquated. I think she really is the Director of Human Resources, and it may be something the board might want to consider as we move forward, because Personnel Director is not really the summation of what her role is and what that department does. So it might be something that the Town Manager's Office may consider. There might be a title change, but it is, in fact, it would reflect more what the services in that office does provide.
Well said, Selectman Murphy, and I can affirm that on more than one occasion, we've had some discussions regarding the more appropriate title of Human Resources Director. And I'll just note, however, that the Personnel Director title is in the town charter, so it would require a charter change to affect that adjustment. And that is, you know, a bit more daunting than it might be otherwise. But nonetheless, I think it's important, and I think it's certainly reflective of the willingness that Denise has shown to take on a number of tasks and do them in an extraordinary professional manner. So she's a great addition to our team. And I should note that this is also moving the direction that the board had requested in terms of consideration for consolidation of positions and functions and roles. And Denise has been willing to take this into account from day one, when I hired her as Personnel Director. So to her credit, this has been a while, and some of these things go through transitions, but she stepped up, and we appreciate it very much.
Ms. Moffett?
I'd just say congratulations to you. And I was somewhat aware of what Mr. Spivey did concerning the schools.
Yes.
And I know there were many students that received a lot of assistance from him. And I would presume that's going to be on your schedule of things to do.
I'll let, no.
Maybe I should comment on that, just in general, Selectman Moffett, if I could, that what I envision is the school department, the school-side duties would be undertaken by whomever the school superintendent might determine is best able to do that. And my appointment of Denise as affirmative action officer, basically taking on the town side duties, recognizing that, as you've noted, George Spivey had a very significant role on the school department side as well, and he served both the town and the school on a part-time basis, and that made up his total position. So I'm not suggesting that the duties on the school side would not be undertaken in some other form, but I'll leave that to my colleague, School Superintendent, on the school side, and follow her lead with that. In the meantime, Denise will handle things on the town side for affirmative action.
I will say, you needed that answer because you had an unusual look on your face. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you all for your kind words. It's been a very enjoyable place to work, so thank you. I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. So we need a motion to ratify the appointment?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Congratulations. Next item on the agenda, announcing the April 2014 Annual Town Meeting schedule. The warrant for the 2014 Annual Town Meeting, the April 2014 Annual Town Meeting, will be closed on Friday, January 3, 2014. The Selectmen will vote the articles and execute the warrant on Monday, January 27, 2014. The articles will be published on Friday, January 31, 2014. The board will vote recommendations for those articles on Monday, March 10, 2014. The article, the warrant, excuse me, will be published with those recommendations on Friday, March 21, 2014. And of course, town meeting will be Monday, April 7, 2014.
So move.
Yeah, I'll take a motion on it. This is a decision being made. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions or comments from the audience? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next item on our agenda, we have a tree hearing. Notice is hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Falmouth Board of Selectmen on the application of the tree warden for the removal of five trees at the following locations. 217 Jones Road, two Norway maples that are structurally unsound, and 229 Jones Road, three Norway maples that are structurally unsound. Mr. Gomes?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Rocky Gomes, tree warden for the town of Falmouth. I'd like to apologize, we had had a PowerPoint presentation ready for you folks, but we're having a little problem with the presentation right now. But the trees on Jones Road have been posted for the last 10 days, as required by law, so I hope anybody would have went out and taken a look at them. If you've noticed, well, those trees are about anywhere from 50 to 70 years old, the trees that we're speaking of, through years of winter moth infestation, and some of the pruning wasn't always done the best ways, so. Now Enstal's doing a lot better job at doing that, but those trees there specifically are in really bad shape. There's huge cavities in them. You'll see the top of them in decline. We've been really keeping an eye on those trees for the last few years, and each year, you know, we're losing 10 or 20% more of dieback. And right now, if you look at them, you'll see there's, there's really not much there. You'll see there is some leaves still on those trees, and that, those only stayed there because those were the areas in the trees where they were dead. There really wasn't much there, so I would like to make a recommendation to remove those trees. And we are going to have an aggressive planting plan coming forward to plant Jones Road and Gifford Street. That intersection has had a lot of trees come down in the past few years, and there are a few that will have to come down in the years to come. So with Enstal, they would actually like to donate some money and actually plant the corners for us. So we're just coming, we're trying to come to an agreement on what exactly we're going to plant there, you know, can be planted without having to be trimmed around wires. Some of them will be planted back on private property, which we are allowed to do within 10 feet of the property line. So that's what we're looking to do in that area. So you should see a dramatic change in the next few years in that area. And also, I'd like to report that we're actually now, we have a new, our old tree farm, for years, we weren't in operation. We're back in operation, our tree farm. I just bought 60 plants that are going in there in the spring, and we'll keep, years from years from now, we'll keep going with that, with that program so we can continue to plant trees in this community. As you've known of over the past, because of budgets, we just haven't had the money to do it, so. We've done it through local donations, you know, a person would donate a tree in front of their house, and we go in and plant it for them on town property. So that's what we've done. So as I said, if we could remove these, then we can go ahead with the planting, and I expect to plant that in the spring.
Questions from the board?
Rocky, do you use the tree farm of the county to replace the trees with?
Yes, we're buying the smaller plants from them, and then we bring them into our tree farm and leave them there for three to four years, and then we'll take them out and pass them out through the community.
Now, are the Norway maples, Norway maples, are those the trees that have had difficulty surviving over the years? Haven't we had problems with those for a long time?
Yeah, we've had a huge problem with Norway maples. I mean, anytime we get a windstorm, there's branch, there's huge leaders coming off of them. They're just not a hottie tree, that's a tree that we planted back in the late 40s, 50s, and they just weren't a great tree to plant. I mean, they leaf out, they grow quickly, but, you know, their life cycle's only about 70 years, and we're at that now. Some of them that have only been out there 50 years, you know. And once again, the winter moth, excuse me, did take a toll on them, a huge toll.
And Mr. Gomes, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is the Norway maple is considered by the state to be an invasive species.
Yes, it is. No, it isn't.
So removing them and replacing them with native species is certainly always a good idea where we can.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the board?
Just one, one question. Where is the tree farm?
The tree farm is on Gifford Street, right across from the Steamship, Steamship Glory Lot. We have a quite sizable tree farm, so. Actually, we're, and what we're doing is, we're working with the Cooperative Extension out of Bonstable to plant this tree farm. So they're going to come, show us exactly how they did it professionally, so this is a, you know, a good opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, I'll move approval. Or do you want to?
Yeah, this is a hearing, so we need to close it first. I do want to take, because this is a hearing, I do want to take any public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this? Or against? Any general questions?
I would move.
Hi, Kate Mahoney from Precinct 9, I think. And I have some trees on my property. Would you want to come dig them up? That I'm willing to donate. That's all, that's all I want to say, so.
I'll keep that in mind.
Anyone else who'd like to speak on this hearing? Okay, hearing none?
Will we close the hearing?
A motion to close the hearing and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Unanimous. And how will we, how do we want to proceed on this?
I'll move approvals to remove the two Norway maples, the 217 Jones Road, and the three Norway maples at 229 Jones Road.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. All right. Next item on our agenda, we have the Council on Aging Needs Assessment Presentation. Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Jim Viera, Chairman of the Falmouth Council on Aging, and thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. At town meeting in November, you heard from our consultant about the needs assessment that was done this fall, and it's now complete and about to be printed. We realized on reviewing the draft that the document is going to be helpful to not just the Council on Aging, but many of the town committees and also parts of the community in anticipating the needs of our growing senior population. And I think at town meeting, you saw the demographics that were on the screen, and they're quite impressive. A proper presentation reflecting the extensive work that went into the needs assessment is being scheduled for January 25 at 10 o'clock at the Senior Center. And of course, you are all invited, and we hope that you'll be able to attend. We expect that many of the people that attended the forums that we did and that participated in the effort will want to attend and hear the presentation and also participate in a discussion and question and answer session. So we're going to have an extended presentation. Our consultant will come down at that time. So that will be January 25 at 10 o'clock at the Senior Center. Generally, respondents are aware of the Senior Center providing a wide variety of services and programs, and they generate a high level of participat, there you go, you know what I'm trying to say. Many who stated that they did not use the service said it was because they were unaware of what services were available or how to access them. So educating our leaders and community is a continuing goal for us. Given the value that residents hold for the center, expanded service demands may soon overwhelm the ability of programming space and parking. In fact, we experienced that today, and this was mentioned by many of our participants. As boomers such as myself begin to utilize the center, program priorities may shift, and we're going to be required to continue the development of new and appropriate and we're going to be required to continue the development of new and appropriate programs. Looking ahead to the future, many respondents voiced a number of concerns about aging in place. Mentioned was the high cost of living in Falmouth and whether they will be able to stretch their retirement funds to meet their future needs. Many are anxious about whether they will have access to quality services in the future that will help them maintain their health and remain independent. There's a strong desire to remain engaged in social networks, including being near family and friends. And finally, there was a strong desire expressed to remain active in the community and concerns that opportunities to do so could be restricted by lack of transportation, poor health, or lack of programs aimed at addressing these concerns. So I'd like to thank the Friends of Falmouth Senior Center for funding the study and to all those who took time to respond to the questionnaires, attend the forums, and participate in the focus groups and interviews, and I know that several of you here in the room were in the focus groups and were interviewed, so thank you. So what's next for us? We're requesting that a task force be formed to evaluate options available for a new senior center. And the work of the task force will include the following: to develop a timeline for site selection and a feasibility study; to develop the site selection criteria; to develop a list of sites that meet that criteria, including redevelopment opportunities; to evaluate those sites. All of these tasks are to be reviewed and approved by the town manager and reported to your Board. This report would identify the top sites to be included in the feasibility study. The task force would further identify the feasibility funding sources. The Council on Aging presently has a $20,000 grant for part of this study. The balance may be from donations or Town Meeting article or additional grants. The group would also be drafting a scope of services for further review and approval. Regardless of the funding, the feasibility study will follow the required town procurement methods. Upon completion of the report, we will present those findings to Town Meeting. And I'd like to thank Mr. Souso and Ms. Harper for their assistance in putting this together for us. We had a very productive meeting before Town Meeting with Mr. Murphy and Ms. Harper, and we talked about what the steps were going forward, and we thought that this presents a good path for us. And I also want to mention that parallel to this effort, the evaluation of operational expenses that come with a new and expanded facility will be going forward. Jill Bishop, our director, will continue to work with the town manager to identify and plan for those future demands. Finally, we're proposing for your consideration the task force, and after some lengthy discussions, we would like to present to you a proposed task force for your review. And they would be myself and Brenda Swain, the Vice Chairman of the Council on Aging, who is here with me, a representative from your Board, a FinCom representative, a representative from the Town Planning Office, and also the following community representatives: Sally Giffen, who was the former Chair of the Town Building Committee, and Dick Bowen, who is also the Town Building Committee Representative. And both of these are very experienced people with municipal projects, as I'm sure you're aware of. So we'd like to begin our work as soon as possible and hope that you'll be able to take action on the request. Part of the reason why we'd like to start soon is that it may be that we are request, we would request at the special Town Meeting some additional funding to match the $20,000 grant we have. And if we're going to accomplish that, as you just mentioned, the special is closing, I think you said, on the 34th. So if we can get this task force together, we would at least be able to explore that possibility before the warrant closes. But generally, we are, we'd like to start, we'd like to, we have some traction, we have some good momentum going in the community, a lot of interest, and certainly, the response to the needs assessment was overwhelming, and so we'd like to keep this project going and get the task force in place, so. And questions, myself or Brenda or Jill would be happy to answer.
Just so the Board understands, we're being asked to essentially create a Building Space Needs Task Force, a temporary committee on the order of the Capitol Advisory Committee that we appointed last year. And I assume, do you anticipate any, is there a length of time that you're talking about being prepared for the Spring Town Meeting?
What we'd like to be is prepared to have a feasibility study to be funded at that time, so we may or may not be ready to jump into a feasibility study at that time, but we would at least know what our funding requirements would be. We are not expecting at Spring Town Meeting to be asking certainly for any building or planning money at that time, it would strictly be the feasibility study if it happens, if it's necessary for the special. So this will be an ongoing program. We don't expect, you know, we're going to be looking at a lot of sites, both developed sites and vacant sites, and I suspect it'll take a few months to get through it.
I wanted to be clear, you state here that this is a Senior Center Building Space Needs Task Force, this is not a building committee to build a senior center, is it, is it just the needs task force at this time?
That's correct, this is a committee that will look at sites. We expect that when we get through this process and there's a feasibility study done, this committee will be disbanded, and then you will appoint a building committee. Two separate things.
I think that's very good, and I think that for this particular task, I think your selection of community members is really excellent.
Thank you.
I mean, people who have real experience in this, so I'm sure they'll bring a great deal to the task force.
No one can doubt that the seniors in this community have waited a long time to be on the list, as we've moved through capital expenditures in this community, and I think it's their turn. And so I'd like to make a couple of suggestions to the Board tonight. Number one is that, I don't know whether we can vote this tonight, I surely can tell you that, looking at a couple of the folks on here, and I hope you've already talked to them, Sally Giffen and Rich Bowen, I mean, they're folks that brought projects into, on time and below budget in this community, and well done. Library is one of them, you know, the building committee there did an exemplary job. So whether we can vote this committee to move forward tonight or put it on our first meeting in January, I think would behoove us to at least move the process along and see how it continues to go. The other thing is, no one's guaranteeing there's a special this year, so I would hope that maybe your group would get together with the town manager's office to at least do a placeholder before January 3rd, so that we know, in fact, by January 24th, whether we're in that position to be actually, you know, come forward with an article, because not necessarily is a special guaranteed. So I don't want folks to think, oh, we're going to throw this in the special, that's not necessarily the truth. So I don't know, those are my thoughts, so it's up to the Board how you want to proceed.
Unfortunately, I think the timetable may not work out, because I can't see how we can actually appoint this committee tonight when we don't have some names that are filling in. And I'm also a little bit wary of creating committee and appointing that committee on the same night with some information out there, and then we don't meet again until January 6th, at which point we could finalize who that committee is, and the committee really can't do the work that you're talking about until they exist officially.
I think one of the things we have to consider, too, is that we may want to discuss with Town Council, because I think when we do create committees, there's some advertising requirements for those committees. And while we appreciate your recommendations here for the structure of the committee, I think we may need to, by default, advertise that we're forming a committee and make sure that the general public knows and understands that. I don't think that was made clear in our agenda posting this evening, so that might be a little bit of a problem for us.
Well, I might say, this is really a task force, this is a very specific group that needs specific types of people on it, so it's really not a committee, it's a short-term appointed task force to complete a specific mission, which is to do a space needs assessment. So I'm not sure, because it's not a committee, that it has to go through that whole committee process. This is a group that says, these are the people I need, these are the skills we need, these are the types of individuals, they've already listed two, and then the others are just representatives of the planning department, the Board of Selectmen, and the finance committee, and that's kind of it.
We really consider this a working group.
So I would see that this, it's kind of a working group that doesn't really have to go through a formal process, I would think, and that's...
And I tend to agree with you, I mean, even the Capital Needs Committee, we came out with a representative, two representatives from the Board of Selectmen, you know, finance, two representatives from the Finance Committee. You know, we struggled to get the Finance Committee to come up with a couple, but point be told, that's how we just developed it. I think you've got a broad range consensus here.
And I think they create their own, I think all we do is provide a selectmen, to fill the selectmen, and you go ahead and form your task force and get the job done. Are you asking us to appoint your task force?
Well, I think it would be necessary for us to appoint the task force. I think one of the things we have to remember here, folks, is that the Board's in charge. And while I appreciate what Mr. Viera and the work of the needs assessment, the Council on Aging, what they've done thus far in the needs assessment presentation, ultimately, if we're going to move forward with this as a town, it has to come from the Board. This simply cannot be something driven by the Council on Aging and come to Town Meeting at some point. The Board, if we're going to appoint, if we're going to approve this process, if we're going to say that, yes, we want to build a new senior center, we need to actually appoint this committee. We need to make sure that the public understands what the outcome of this is going to be. And more importantly, we need to be willing and able to say that, okay, once this feasibility study is done, once the Space Needs Task Force has completed its work, that we're prepared to say, okay, we're going to move ahead with this, because ultimately, what we don't want to do is start down a road and have another report or recommend, set of recommendations that gets put on a shelf and then ignored, and that's happened in the past, of course. So there's a few things here that have to be considered, not the least of which is the entire capital plan, to say, are we at a point now that we can bring something to the town in the next few years to say that, yes, we're going to have the, not only the preparation, and obviously, the Council on Aging and by the recommendation of this Space Needs Task Force, I think we'll have the means or the plan for it, but the question is, will we have the funding for it? And that has to be considered in the grand scope of the entire capital plan.
Well, I don't want to debate this with you, but I think we're really looking at a very small group of people with a very specific task, they could probably get done in six to eight months, perhaps, and when they're done, they're done. And they do the space needs part, and they come to the group, to the Senior Center group and say, to the Board, and say, here we are, we've done the space needs, and so then they make a presentation to us, these are the space needs, and then we review that, and we go from there. So I think this is just one small part that needs to be done, and they could do this on their own, I mean, if they wanted to, really, they've coming here, communicating with us, and I don't think they're asking us to do anything at this point, other than, can we have one of your members be on our task force, and let's get this step done, then we come back, we tell you the results of that, and then we just, then we move on to the next step, and this, and then they lay out for us what they think the next step is. So I don't think we're committing to anything. I think they're doing a great job by taking this on as a group of volunteers and doing a big job, which is to do space needs. And maybe they present it to us, and we think it's wonderful, or maybe we want to say, you need to go back and do a couple of more things from our perspective, you know, we think there's other places, but I don't think this is the long haul yet, this is just a very small group that they've put together to get their job done, which is to move to the part where we start getting into the big picture items. So I don't really think we have, I don't think we want control over this task force, we want them to do their job and do it really well, and I think they're prepared to do that, and then come back to us with the results. I mean, that's how I see it, so.
Mr. Murphy?
I guess the best way, I think I visualize and compare in this is, when we put together the pool rink committee, we had folks from the ice arena who wanted a nice arena, we had folks that wanted a pool in this community, and rather than let them all go out on their own, they came and they suggested, we're going to put together a committee. If you remember right, they raised over 50 percent of the funds to do all of their investigative work, and at the end, we decided we're not going to move forward with this, it just doesn't fit into the town's capital plan, and, but it provided a great exercise, because we were able to utilize professional staff, and we kept everybody within the loop. If you follow what I mean by in the loop, they could go out and do their own assessment here, all by themselves, without member of the Board of Selectmen, without anybody from the planning board, without anybody from the Finance Committee, and then they'd come back and make a presentation to us. At least this way, everybody's in the loop, and there's a lot of naysayers about, you know, when it comes to finance, you know, what are the long-range costs there? Is this location, or this needs, that's your needs, but is that a want or is that a need? So we'd be able to come up with some constructive input as it goes forward. We all know I'm frugal, but I don't think we're at a point where we're spending anybody's money, and I think it's just a fact-finding type of scenario, that they're looking for the blessing of the community as well as some input from professional staff, not just to be out there on their own. And, I mean, they paid for the needs assessment up until now themselves, so I think the least we can do is start to at least engage in the process. No one's giving anyone any timetables here, no one's saying this is going to be done in two years, or, you know, three years, or what have you, so that's just my personal thoughts.
I think maybe, I think maybe what you were saying, Mr. Chairman, is maybe too heavy an idea. I think it is much simpler, and I think that, as you have explained it to us, Mr. Viera, that it is simply, you have this in order, you're explaining it to us, and I think that we just stop at that point, until you come back again with your next part of your project. I don't think you need a vote this evening from Selectmen to say, to continue, because you're looking for three people to finish up on that committee.
Actually, I've got a question for the Board, because I think there's a little confusion here, there's a piece missing, if I may. The Council on Aging, who appoints it? This Board does. The Council on Aging, ladies and gentlemen, is an advisory board to the Board of Selectmen. And the reason why I think we need to have perhaps a separate agenda item in our next meeting, we need to perhaps advertise some of these positions or have another discussion, if nothing else, to make sure that the public understands what's going on, because we have had in the past advisory boards that have, as is being suggested this evening, that they've gone off on their own, done their own thing, they come back to the Board, and the Board says, what are you doing? You're an advisory board, and you need permission from the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Viera is going through the proper channels, and I want to thank him for that, because the Council on Aging really does need the Board's permission to pursue this. We provide these various advisory committees with tasks, with direction, to say, this is the direction we want to move in. Now, we started that process with the Council on Aging when they said, we'd like to do a feasibility, we'd like to do a needs assessment, and we said, yes, proceed with the needs assessment. And now they're coming back to us for the next phase and saying, okay, we've done the needs assessment, now we want to do a Space Needs Task Force. They've provided us with the outline here, phenomenal, and I have to tell you, Mr. Viera, the whole scope here, item number three, is exactly the sort of thing that we need to see, that the public needs to see, so that they know exactly what it is that we're doing and what the expectation is. You've set the expectations here, absolutely fantastic. But it is incumbent upon the Board to essentially put our stamp of approval on this, folks, and to say that, yes, we want you to proceed. And I've got to remind the Board, and this is what I'm saying, is that every time we say, yes, proceed, we're essentially knocking over another domino. And at the end of these, this line of dominos, ladies and gentlemen, is a new senior center. This is a process, this isn't just to say, yes, they can go off and do what they want, and then eventually come back to us and we'll figure something out then. We need to, as we move along this process, which is why I'm asking the Board to consider... We need to, as we move along this process, which is why I'm asking the board to consider that, from the big-picture perspective, we need to know also what we have for capital needs in the next few years. Because while we want to make sure that this is done, and I think the Council on Aging is going about this the right way, we have to make sure that we're on board with this, and that the town is on board with this, so that when we say, "Okay, let's do the feasibility study, let's have the task force done." So, when they come back to us, let's say we appoint this, and they present a report to town meeting, let's say, next fall, when they've completed their work, town meeting is going to be standing up and saying, "Okay, you've done this, here are the needs, what's it going to cost us? How soon are you going to be coming back to us, asking for money to build a new senior center?" These are the things we have to anticipate, folks. This is a planning process, and it's not enough for us to just say, "Go ahead and do it." And so, I commend Mr. Viera and the Council on Aging for coming back to us and asking us for permission to move ahead with the next step. We have to give permission here, folks. And if we're going to do this, let's think seriously about the recommendation here for the task force, whether we want to move ahead with their recommendation, whether we want to open this up to the general public, because there may be some folks in the public who want to participate in this process. But I think in general, we need to make sure that everyone is engaged, and that everyone understands what's going on. Now, perhaps shame on me for not appropriately putting this on the agenda. It says Needs Assessment Presentation, and this is essentially a follow-up to the Needs Assessment Presentation that was done at town meeting. But what is being requested here this evening is a little bit more broad in scope. And I want to ask the board to take this under its wing tonight, give it consideration. We'll bring it back our first meeting in January, and then we can cast some votes then. But remember, this is a process. It's not something where we're going to say, "Just go ahead and let them do this."
No, those are very good points, Selectmen and Platten. But a couple of the things that I think it is important that this board endorse, whatever process the Council on Aging recommends, or that you ultimately come to be able to support. If the staff is going to work on identifying sites, those are existing sites in our community, redevelopment sites, which are sites where other departments may have thoughts or ideas about, the Board of Selectmen needs to be behind that. You'll need to approve the sites that are considered. You would ultimately be reviewing the narrowing of those sites. This is a very serious process, that if you want the staff at all levels engaged in this, and I think that you would, that the Board of Selectmen does need to provide a stamp of approval. In order to move this forward, what I think you might be able to do is ask the staff to go back and review the appointment process for this type of a task force with town council. In the meantime, if it's something you think you have an interest in, you could ask us to reach out to the other boards, the Planning Board, and the Finance Committee for their recommended participant, so you could come back on the sixth with those folks in place with a recommended process, and that we sort of move it forward in a little bit of an evolutionary fashion.
Mr. Viera?
I want to clarify what my concern was. I think the presentation we've given is fantastic, the work that's been done. I would love to be able to vote that we approve the creation of this committee tonight. I just am not as comfortable with, and in the same night, appointing who's on it. That I would do, I mean, I wouldn't, I mean, I think, I think this is within the scope of what was presented. This is probably the New Assessment Presentation. I think it is within our general items to be able to create this committee tonight. But I just would stop at then appointing the people without the public having a chance of being, saying who they'd like to have on it. And to have that in one night is what concerns me.
And I have no problem with that. When I was speaking, I said we could, I don't know whether we could do it tonight or our next meeting, but I don't think this is something we need to put on the back burner in six months down the road, because that, this is part of a process. If any of you remember, at one point in time, came forward a proposed senior center that was out in Davisville. And to me, that kind of came out of nowhere. I think this process that these folks have engaged at this time is a thoughtful process. Let's see what our Needs Assessment is. Let's now try to define that a little bit further, find some site selection. I think they're going through the whole process in the right way, by saying, "We want to include as many people as possible, especially town departments, especially folks from Finance Committee, you know, the Board of Selectmen, sooner versus later." And I think that's important. When the time comes to start presenting, I think that we'll have aired everything, because that's the important part of a process like this. This is a building project, if that, in fact, comes to fruition. But I think, I have no problem with putting this off till the first meeting in January, but I think we should say, "We're going to do this committee tonight," and say, "Okay, first meeting in January, we're going to start putting people in charge of this committee and appointing some folks in this." And I think it's a good parameter. Got to start somewhere. And I think they came forward and said, "Would, you know, we'd like to put eight people on." Okay, if we decide we're going to put one or two at-large members on, fine. But I think we need to be able to start to move the process forward. And I think, as you say, the scope, I think that's, it's taken half of our work and staff's work away. I think it's well-defined. As we know, Mr. Viera served many years in the Finance Committee, so he knows the questions that we're all going to be asking.
What did you expect this evening when you gave this report? What did you want to go home with?
Okay. Some of this work we've been doing for the past few months. And, you know, informally, myself and Brenda and Jill have been starting, we've been thinking about this, obviously, for a long time. And we're at the point now where we need more input to give the process credibility. And that's why we're here. We have spoken to the other two members that we mentioned by name to gauge their interest, and they are interested and willing to serve. We think it's a good group. We realize that I am an impatient person, and I deal with deadlines every day. I have a certain amount of work to get done in a certain amount of time. So, I'm always pushing. And I will continue to push to get this project to the point where hopefully, we'll get to town meeting at some point. So, it's my job to push, and it's my job to come and say, "I want this tonight." And, and obviously, you know, if your board is not ready to do this tonight, and if it's after the first of the year, and my only concern is, as Mr. Murphy said, let's not, we have traction, we have momentum, we want to keep this process going. If you're not ready to have this task force given your seal of approval tonight, then we certainly hope that it's soon after the first of the year. But I was hoping that, obviously, that you would say, "Yeah, great, let's go for it."
That's convinced me. I just, I just needed to know just which direction you were looking for, and how much longer we needed to discuss this, and whether we did actually take a vote, and whether it needs to be put off. So, if your anticipation, when you came this evening, was to present, and you did a fabulous job on that...
Thank you.
...is to then say, "It's time for a vote." Okay.
I just have one other comment. I think you have more information on one and a quarter pages than I have seen in a long time. And you've laid out the whole process of your reporting requirements to the town manager. You're going to work, this is a staff task force. It's a group of staff people who, some who are town department representatives. They're all going to work together, they're going to report to the town manager on a regular basis, they have timelines set. To me, it is clearer than any presentation I've seen in a long time. And somehow, sometimes our board has a tremendous capacity to take something very simple and making it complex.
I would like to make a motion and say...
And I think this is so simple. I, I, you know, it's your decision, but I'll tell you, I would have no problem approving this tonight and say, "Go for it. Come back and let us know what you're doing."
Thank you. My only concern, and while we all have had the chance to look at this and read this, I just want everybody to understand, the public has not. And Mr. Viera, again, you folks have done a phenomenal job. You've lined things up appropriately, you keep coming back to the board at the appropriate time to get the necessary permission to move on to the next step. This is exactly the way we would expect things to be done, and this is the, exactly the way it should be done. The only thing that we need to remember is, we've got to include the public in this process, and that's what I want the board to remember, that's why I want the Council on Aging to remember, is that we have to make sure that the public sees what the process is, that they buy into it as well, because ultimately, it's going to take a vote of the public to approve the funds that are necessary to build the new senior center. And it's very easy to hold up projects if somebody feels like they were left out, or somebody feels like the process did not include the public. So, if we want to put our preliminary stamp of approval on this this evening, or if we want to say, "Okay, we're going to appoint a Space Needs Task Force," fine, that's the board's decision. I would suggest that we do come back in January and make sure that we've, make sure that the public has an opportunity to weigh in on this fully. I don't know if, has this information been provided to the general public in any way? Has it been posted to our website?
No.
Okay.
This is an internal working group.
Maybe let's cut to the chase here.
Yeah, let's do something.
Make a motion that we approve the task force this evening.
Okay.
And then schedule, on our January, first meeting in January, January the 6th, any further discussion on the members of the task force.
Okay.
But, let's take that in stages. So, my first motion would be to approve the task force, and actually, I think it's fair to say that, you know, this scope and the project request, and the background, and the scope of services, the occupational expenses, and the conclusion would be fair to include as part of the task force. So, and then, on January the 6th, we can decide that...
Are you going to separate the motions? You're going to approve the task force on one motion, and then decide?
Sure, that's right. That's right. So, I make a motion that we approve the, the...
Creation.
Creation of a senior center, building Space Needs Task Force.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? From the general public?
Hi, Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I have absolutely nothing against the Council on Aging, the senior center I have something against. My mother goes there a couple of days a week, at least, and they have issues. We all know that we need to do something there. But, to this point, I mean, and they've been doing their preliminary planning, but we had one member of the Board of Selectmen and one member of town management meet, and then they're coming here with this proposal. I'd just like to point out that if you don't invite the public in, you are in effect shutting the public out. And I think that there's a lot of people who've been watching what's going on around here lately, and think that there's a lot of consolidation of powers going into the front office. On the subject that we're going to hear later on this evening, about the special events policy, I mean, I heard stated twice by Selectmen...
Let's focus on...
No, because the same thing was said here, I'm going to bring it back around.
Okay.
That a lot of this public process was unnecessary, because town management knows what we're thinking. And that was said twice. Now, I heard said tonight, that Mr. Viera was on the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee knows what we're thinking. But does the public know what you're thinking? Does the public know what this proposal said? I don't think so. And just another thing, not, you know, this is an ad hoc committee, or whatever you want, but the charter does outlaw eight-member boards and committees. And if you're going to advertise to the public, I mean, you should, and I think you should interview and let people in, because there may be people out there that have something to add. And I think we're lacking in openness a lot lately. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one comment. I, in fact, did meet with those folks, but I was the only member of the board who showed up at that meeting. I was invited, and there were other members of the board, happened to be invited that same evening, which I know you were too, as well, Mr. Chairman. But because of scheduling, other folks were not able to attend. But I was able to attend, and that's why I went to that meeting.
And I've attended at least two or three of the focus groups, so...
But I think that the point that Mr. Finer is trying to make is that the public needs to be involved in the process as well. Mr. Viera? The, really, the whole point of the Needs Assessment...
We have a motion in a second.
It was not a motion, yeah.
The whole point of the Needs Assessment that we did was to involve the public. The questionnaires, the forums, the interviews, the whole thing. Tremendous public response, and tremendous involvement in that assessment. And there were questionnaires that were sent out, but there were also questionnaires that were available to anyone of any age in the town of Falmouth to participate. So, there's, there really has been ample opportunity for engagement in the process up to this point. Agreed. And I, but I think we need to continue to do that.
And I think to give our stamp of approval to this, to this task force is very important. But the only way we can give our stamp of approval to this task force is if we appoint it correctly. And that's where I still, and I think, they, this task force needs our full support, that we want them to go forward, and the way to do that is to create the committee in one night, post it, and then...
So, we've got the motion and a second to create the task force. I like what Ms. Harper had said earlier about going back, looking at how these task forces have been created in the past. I think some input from the town manager's office can help us when we move ahead. As Mr. Finer noted, it is an even, even number of members, which may be a problem.
It's not, one's ex officio, so it's really not even. There's seven members and one ex officio.
Ex officio means it's out of there.
You can't vote.
No. Ex officio means that you're on it automatically because of your job.
Yeah.
Ex officio, non-voting member is different.
Well, then maybe they could explain if the ex officio is a non-voting member.
And then that's, but that's one of the things that we would need to determine, if the ex officio member was a voting member or a non-voting member. And this, again, is why it would probably be advisable to get some additional information from the town manager's office before we actually create the task force in detail. I think taking the step this evening to say, "We'd like to create the task force, we'd like you to take the next step," is a good step, but let's not move too quickly, because if we do, we may end up stepping on toes, or, as Mr. Finer's concerns are raised, excluding members of the public. And we don't want to do that, because then that's going to ultimately affect how this project moves ahead in total. So...
Just one further comment on that.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with that. And basically, we can command the town manager's office come back with a recommendation on the task force. In other words, we would probably want some of these folks on this task force, so at that first meeting, that would be the recommendation that we'd be looking forward to see.
Okay. All right. So, motion and a second to create the task force. Any discussion? Less questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. So, we'll bring you back in January. We'll have some recommendations from the town manager's office as to the structure of the task force, if we need to do any advertising for any positions, or if this, I think, would be adequate. We'll also, let's make sure that we get the, this document posted, so the general public can see this, and if there are any questions or comments, that we can get that feedback. Again, not trying to put the brakes on anything, but we want to make sure that nobody else does. We want to make sure that we're following the appropriate steps, and that the public is appropriately informed of what we're doing and how we're going about it, so...
Would it be appropriate to at least charge this task force with the scope of services as laid out by this document tonight, or do you think we can...
I would, I would say, let's get the document out there so the public can comment on it, and, and make sure that we also, because we really can't task anything at this point until we have a group to work with, so...
Just a minor point, that it would be posted with the Council on Aging, or the, just so people know where to find the document?
I would say, under the Council of Aging, that would be the appropriate place to put it. Could I ask a question of Mr. Sussa? Yes. What would we need to do to get a placeholder article for the, for the town meeting, as Mr. Murphy mentioned?
Transmit a written request to us.
Okay.
Yeah, with a little description of what you're advocating.
Okay, thank you.
I would just like to make one comment to you, that I went to several of the meetings on the consensus, and was involved. And that was because you had advertised. And even at that point, if I wasn't a Selectman, I did read about it, and I did go, and I continued to go. So, you did a good job notifying the public, and I thought there was a good attendance.
Thank you.
They were very well-run meetings.
I can't take credit for all of this stuff that you've talked about tonight. You know, these two ladies over here have been tremendous, and Heather has been a tremendous help to us, too, in putting that document together, so I want to thank everybody who's participated.
Well, thank you for acknowledging them. They did a good job.
Thank you very much. And thank you, and keep pushing, Mr. Viera. All right. Next item on our agenda, authorize application for a grant in the North Falmouth Library. Mr. Sussa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I was recently approached by, uh, Library Director Leslie Morrissey regarding, uh, interest in, uh, discussing the possibility of, uh, applying for a grant, uh, which is available, as I understand it, on a competitive basis through the state for, uh, planning and, uh, potentially for design purposes for library branches. And, uh, Leslie's here, uh, to speak tonight about that, uh, concept. Uh, I know that, of course, the, uh, the board by protocol has also involved the Finance Committee, need discussions about matters of this nature, particularly where grant funds are, uh, being requested, and, uh, I know I've mentioned that to Leslie as well. Uh, so that would be part of the process, subject to the board's, uh, comfort going forward. So, Leslie is here to make some, uh, further comments and answer questions if that's agreeable.
Yep. The library's literally following in the Council on Aging's footprints here. Um, the grant is a design and planning grant, um, that is part of the Board of Library, it actually is part of the state's capital plan. Uh, the funds come out of that. Um, it's up to $50,000 from the state and requirement that the local community provide $25,000 in addition to the $50,000, and that can be from any local source, and we have that money already set aside, um, from the trustees. So this grant involves no funding from the town whatsoever. Um, what it would do, um, it was, it, actually, this grant is designed to prepare a library to apply for a construction grant. For us, it would be for the North Falmouth branch, and it would be in either, the grant award, uh, the grant program would be announced in either 2017 or 2018, and it's a five-year process. So it would be, um, '22 or '23 before this period is over. It's a highly competitive grant, it has $1.5 million set aside, um, and that's enough money to fund 20 to 25 grants, and 35 have applied, so it doesn't mean that we apply and we'll get it. The grant would pay for a library building consus, uh, consultant to, um, to do a needs assessment in the community, similar to what you've just talked about, the focus groups, the surveys, the, um, community meetings, to determine the needs, and this is what we're really interested in, as well as, um, the facility, is the needs for services in the North Falmouth area. And that, those needs we would incorporate into our strategic plan as we're writing that beginning in the, in the fall of this year, this, next year. Um, or the spring, maybe. If it were determined through this needs assessment and that a new or renovated facility is needed, we would write the building program, which would kind of incorporate what the services are into a statement that would be reflected in the building, in which we would be providing for the identified needs of the community. Doesn't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily mean that it will come out with it, with a, um, a new, the need for a new building or for, in addition to the building. We wanna open that up so we can look at all kinds of possibilities for providing library services in North Falmouth. Um, but if this were decided that, um, that we wanted to put in a new building or a renovated building or in addition to the current building, um, this, this project, this grant would pay for project management services, I would provide for architectural schematic designs and engineering and an independent cost estimate of how much the building would be. We, um, meet all the requirements for the grant, we're certified. We haven't had a planning grant in the last 10 years, as a matter of fact, we've never had a planning grant here in Falmouth. Um, we have a long-range plan on file, we have a current update to the long-range plan, we're working on a multiple independent library com, uh, comprehensive plan for library services, and this is the last step before we can apply, and that must be an approved library project, meaning that it has to go before the Board of Selectmen for approval or before town meeting, but in this case, it would be the Board of Selectmen. Um, the application states the specific wording that they want for the approval, and that is to apply for, receive and expend funds, and it takes about two years to get this feasibility study and design schematic planning that happens as well, um, to, to be completed. So the first year would be spent on the feasibility study, the second year, if the, if this is what it showed, would be for, um, design and schematics.
So when it, what is the, the timeframe? I'm looking at this calendar that we've been provided-
I put that information, that's the information we received. Um, we actually will, the grant is due on January 16th, but the grant awards will not play, take place until the following January.
So, I guess the-
So it's quite a, it's quite a long process.
Right. I'm, I'm looking at this from the perspective that we do have, uh, the annual town meeting article that asks that the board submit referrals for grants to the Finance Committee for their input and, and in some cases, approval. I'm just wanting, uh, I just wanna make sure that there's time, if we say, yes, we wanna move ahead with this, that the Finance Committee will be meeting between now and then so that they can also look at this and, and get that feedback to us.
'Cause ultimately, there could be a cost to the town if we decide to-
Yes.
It could be, but that's another vote. It's another decision that's made by the trustees, it's another approval that comes before the Board of Selectmen, and it's another request before town meeting, and it's another vote.
'Cause I would, in reading the eligible projects requirements, I think that you do have to go to a town meeting. The Board of Selectmen is not mentioned in the approvals.
I have, I've spoken to the, to the, um, MBLC about that particular process.
Okay.
Because the town meeting grants, which I'm sure you know, the town meeting grants the right to approve a grant to the Selectmen. And so they're okay with that. They say that's fine as long as town meeting has a vote, has already voted, which they have in the past year.
This board had talked about, uh, the idea of the grants and not approving the grants unless they went to the Finance Committee. This isn't a $3,000 grant that's gonna buy flak jackets for the police department. This is a grant that really probably needs, you know, the concurrence of the Finance Committee before we move forward. With all due respect, I, I mean, this is, we're, apples to oranges, what we were just talking about wasn't grant funds from the, it was a potential that town meeting article that would in fact have a full venting at town meeting for the, for the, uh, for the Senior Center. This, this is actually a grant that brings us down a road, that five people voted us to get on the road.
Right.
Without the input of the Finance Committee and things like that. I, I wholeheartedly don't disagree that it might not be something that we, might or might not be something we wanna get involved in. Uh, I mean, aren't we right now on a remodel project over there at that same facility?
We're doing, well, what we're doing over there now is a small project, which we're doing, we're putting new carpeting in, um, we're putting shelving in that the friends of the library is paying for, and we are repairing the ceiling that's falling down, and we are replacing the lights. Um, but it doesn't do anything, that building is not physically handy, accessible, physically handicapped accessible. It has no space for the children, it has no meeting room space, it has, um, no computers for public use. It is simply a place where people come, they pick up a book, and they leave, and that's all the services that they're getting there. So this is why we wanna look very closely at services. And if you look at the other piece of paper that I gave to you with the timeline on it, the construction program, you can see that the library receives town meeting approval May 16th, 2014 is the date that we have to have approval for this. You can still apply for it, but it won't be considered unless town meeting approves it.
Just, just wanted to just follow up, and the, the follow-up is in regard to this thing that we just spoke about, regard to the Senior Center. I went in and asked to see where our long-range capital plan is with that. I asked again today where our long-range capital plan is in this thing, and I believe we're getting a presentation on those large-ticket items from, from the Finance Director at first meeting in January. But I, I think this board, uh, needs to have that type of information, because it, it would be unrealistic expectations for us to say on any one of these projects, yeah, it sounds great to us, let's move forward. But I really think we need those long-range capital plans in front of us. I also think the Finance Committee needs to be involved in these type of scenarios. I mean, I, I know that's been part of the discussion with the senior, senior group up until now, is where do we fit in? In other words, when is our, when are we getting on the queue? And with all due respect, I think, you know, you've done an outstanding job, Leslie. But we've gotta figure out where the queue is, and we can't have people jumping in, in the queue in, in, in regard to what our professional staff has planned out as a process. So that's really where I'm coming from.
I definitely understand what you're saying, but what, this grant is simply a planning tool. It is not, it is not, we're not looking for construction. We might not even look for construction. We wanna know, how can we, how can we provide the best services in North Falmouth? If there is construction, if there is a construction component involved in that at the end of the feasibility study, then we will be coming to you for construction, but we're not doing that. We're just asking you to allow us to do some good, solid planning with the community, um, and with the power as the bee, to see how can we provide the best possible services we can in North Falmouth, which we are not doing now. We can't even let, I mean, handicapped people can't even use the facilities in North Falmouth. We don't know-
Yeah.
-how they feel about children's programming. Maybe they don't care about that, maybe they all come to the main library. We need to know that. But we need to know where we're going with North Falmouth. The facility itself is in terrible disrepair, but there may be other alternatives besides a new facility that we can be looking at that has nothing to do with construction. This is just preparing, this is just giving us some information that we can use, and if construction is what the information points to, then we have some money to do something and go before this board, and the town is gonna leave it. But we need to do that planning first.
That's fine.
Yeah, Leslie, there's a number of, um, how do I wanna say, sort of conditions to even be eligible for this. And I know you're not a library corporation. You're part of a multi-library-
Right.
-group in a municipality.
Which is why we're here.
So what they're saying here is that, actually, your project has to be approved by town meeting, by a majority vote of town meeting. But it's not the money, it's the, it's the project that has to be approved. And I know with libraries, it's, it's a lot different from any other public building or public service. So, anyway-
And I talked to the-
Yeah, can you talk to this eligibility and why you're, why our library is eligible for this?
We could, I mean, we still can go before town meeting in May. I do, I just have to apply for the grant-
Right.
-by January 16th. We can still go to town meeting in May, and they can just approve it or approve it, which would certainly give us that opportunity. But I have to be able to apply for the grant by January 16th and get everything in. So if I can get everything in, then we can very well, very easily go before town meeting in May.
Okay.
Um, looking at the application you provided, it, I guess I'd have to echo what Mr. Murphy is saying, that it seems like this is further along in the process than I, it seems like we are. It, it talks about the requirements for application, and correct me if I'm wrong, maybe I'm interpreting this incorrectly, but it talks about the design for a project for planning and design, and this is, I guess, that's the grant.
Mm-hmm.
It says includes a preliminary needs assessment, um, map showing existing and possible future sites, a project budget, um, I mean, it sounds, have we done a preliminary needs assessment?
A project, no, no, this is part of the grant. This is what we will be doing in the grant.
Okay.
So I'm not looking for construction money. That has to come off the table, I'm not looking for that. I'm looking to look at North Falmouth to see how we can provide the best services out there using this money that is provided by the state. It may be that I might be coming before you in another two years and asking for construction money, but that's not a given at this particular point.
Do we have a preliminary needs assessment?
We don't, we, that, that's what this is. You might be looking at the construction part of the grant, not the planning and design part. I don't know where you are exactly.
I, on page three, um, the lower left, it says requirements for application. And 2B, it says, "The application shall include a preliminary needs assessment."
Which is what we'll be doing. Preliminary needs instruct, assessment.
It says the application needs-
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
No, that's the application for the, for the construction.
Okay, so-
That, this is what we're doing, is a, we're doing a needs assessment now. The grant will pay for it. We're not doing any construction with this money at all, nothing, no construction.
Right, I understand that, but as I'm reading this application, it suggests that before they give us a grant, that we need a needs assessment. It, it seems-
No, the grant, no, I think, I think that may be misleading to you, and I haven't gotten at it closely, but-
Okay.
Um, the needs assessment is what we're applying for, the library to do.
Under, also on page three, on the right, lower right, it talks about available funding, and it says maximum award of $50,000 or two-thirds of eligible project costs and, and a local match of up to $25,000. So is this gonna require a match by the Town of Falmouth?
The trustees are already providing that.
The trustees are providing-
The library trustees are providing the match.
Right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
No, that's fine.
Um, I, I do think, though, that we should, um, send this to the Finance Committee so that they can take a closer look at this.
I think we have to.
Yeah.
The approval, okay, so, I know this is confusing because I, I'm asking you to allow me to apply for the grant.
And the, on an annual basis, town meeting, one of the first articles that is passed at the spring town meeting is an article that asks that the board confer with the Finance Committee on any grant applications.
Right.
So before we put our stamp of approval on this, what I'm hearing, my opinion and what I'm hearing from other members of the board, is that we'd like to get some feedback from the Finance Committee before we give approval for, for you to apply for the grant.
This would be fine.
Okay.
So the approval then, yes, I guess that approval, uh, in May would be fine, as long as I apply for it and fill, and as long as I send in the application by the deadline, it can still be approved after the application in May.
No, I, I think what we're saying is that you have to get the approval of Finance Committee before we're going to-
Before May 16th, I mean, before.
Before we're going to vote this. We, we asked them to concur with us. We don't have the, the ability to-
No, I understand.
-investigate something like this, on the fly like this. The Finance Committee has that ability as a group, that they do that. And I think that's what, at least that's what I'm saying, that we have agreed with them, because they came to us and said, "You've approved these grants over the years that ultimately have cost the town considerable amount of money." And, and I can use one example, it was a vehicle. The vehicle was in disrepair, we got it for free in a grant. We had to register it, we ended up having to man it, and then we ended up having to replace it. So, you know, I, I, I don't wanna talk about, you know, if, you know, it was a, it was something free that wasn't free. But the Finance Committee came to us with a longstanding policy and said, "You know, it's a town meeting warrant article, you need to abide by that." And basically what we're saying is, we refer something like this to the Finance Committee, they come back and say, "You know, it, it's reasonable."
So my question is then, what is the process from this point, to come, to comply with your-
We would ask the Finance Committee, I'm just pulling up a calendar here, we would ask the Finance Committee to take a look at this and submit, provide us with their recommendation. Um, I think the 20th of January is Martin Luther King Day, so we have the 6th and the 13th, we have two Mondays in January, and we're gonna be meeting all three Mondays in January because we do have the, the budget to go over on the 6th. So, um, we could certainly, on the 6th or the 13th, we could, you know, put our stamp of approval on this. I, I'm not sure if the Finance Committee is meeting between now and, and January 1st, or if they're gonna meet between, say, the week of the 6th- they're going to meet between, say, the week of the 6th. But we can certainly refer this to them and ask for their feedback by the 13th.
It should be timely. It should work for us.
Okay.
I think I need a little clarification. What I understood you presented this evening is for us to approve that you apply for grant money, and that needs to be processed by the 16th of January. And if you receive that grant, there are no commitments that are going to come from the town that is in the finance part or you're looking for money. You simply need a vote this evening that says, "Yes, go ahead with your grant, get it in on time, and you're looking for $50,000." But you have competition, as you, as you talked about other, I mean, how many grants they'll be giving out. But you're not asking for any money from the town at the time you put the application in on the 16th of January.
Correct.
So with the Finance Committee, it's always money. So if you go to the Finance Committee after you have put your application in and you are successful, at that point, you need to notify the Finance Committee and see, because you're not committed to anything beyond having that application filed by the 16th of January in May. Make any sense?
No.
That's to me.
Okay, makes sense? There's no money involved. You are simply asking for a feasibility study.
To plan.
And it is two to three years down the road by the time you get to construction.
Right.
And right now...
If we get there.
If you even get there. But right now, you would like to have a start.
Right.
And it doesn't include money.
Correct.
Your situation, as I understand it, everyone that writes a grant is always fearful for when the grant runs out, and you want to keep the project going, and then you have to pick it up in your budget. And you are not into that position.
Never will be.
I would like to have the Finance Committee agree with you. That's all. I would like to ask the Finance Committee...
But then that puts her, doesn't that put her at a disadvantage to get this prepared by the 16th of January when we only have one meeting in between?
No, we have, we have two meetings. We have the 6th and the 13th, and we could certainly refer this to the Finance Committee and ask them for an answer by the 13th, which, as she said, that would be timely.
That would be timely. I could do that.
You could start to write your grant now, waiting to find out what the Finance Committee is going to say.
Right, I have the grant half written.
And my comment is, with all due respect, this isn't a one-time grant. This, this happens every year.
No.
These grants don't come out.
It happens every five years.
So...
Well, supposedly, it's planned to happen every five years, depending upon state funding.
But my, my point is, I don't know this information tonight, and I think the Finance Committee has the ability to know. When are they in the queue? When are they in line to start any additional project? Is this project even on the plate on the long-range capital plan? And that's what the Finance Committee is going to look at. That's going to see whether this coincides. It's a process, and the process, the reason we got a triple A plus bond rating is because we had fiscal discipline in this community as we moved forward. So we have to continue to include them in the loop. I don't know, but there's one thing I do know, is that you ask the questions, and that's what the Finance Committee should be prepared to be able to answer.
I'm perfectly fine with the Finance Committee, particularly if this is, is what has to be done in order to move forward with this. And I, I'm hoping that I would be able to speak to the Finance Committee, to speak to this project in the 10-day meeting. But I, I do also want you to understand from my perspective that this is important information we're getting about North Falmouth and its services. And as far as I'm concerned, construction is coincidental to this. I really want to get the information I need to make sure that we're providing the best services that we can in North Falmouth. And that if it means a facility, if it, if it means, you know, closing North Falmouth, I don't know what the results are. I need to know what it is the North Falmouth residents want. This is why I want to proceed with this grant, not because I'm looking for construction, but because I'm looking for information.
So we, we've got time. We'll ask the Finance Committee to look at it, provide us with feedback no later than January 13th. That would allow us to put it on the agenda, give you a final answer by the 13th.
Okay.
And then that would be adequate for you to proceed with the application.
Right, because I will have the grant written by then.
Okay.
And so how will I know whether I'll be on the Finance Committee's agenda or not?
That we would have to defer to the Finance Committee.
Talk to Finance, Finance Director Jennifer Petit.
Oh, Jennifer.
And Jennifer will check with the Finance Chair and is more familiar with your agenda. So I'm sure she can make that link for you if you talk to Jennifer.
Okay, that would be fun.
Tomorrow morning.
I would tell Chuck, because I think you do need to have an article in this town meeting to have town meeting approve the project to get the funding. And that has to be...
The town meeting only approves things that require funding. And this has no funding.
Yeah.
I know, but still, the wording I read in this is very clear, that an eligible project must be an approved public library project, which has been approved.
Oh, this project, oh, yeah, that has to require the vote of town meeting, that's true.
Approved by my...
In this particular case.
Right, in this case...
Because it's a library project.
And then that article needs to be filed by January 6th.
Under the state regulations, it requires a vote of town meeting, even if it's not, has no money attached to it.
Okay.
I would think Jennifer Petit would be able to help and assist with that requirement.
That would be great.
And I think the other thing, too, to address what Mr. Murphy was talking about, is that we can, and probably should, as part of our budget discussion in January, have a look at all the capital projects, what's in the queue, what's coming up, because in addition, obviously, to the potential here for something to be done in North Falmouth, we were just talking, obviously, about the senior center. And it'd be good to, we'll have that full review in January. All right, so are we all in agreement, or do we need, do we need to take a vote on this? Is everybody comfortable? We'll refer to the Finance Committee and have an answer no later than the 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, discussion of the appointment of Falmouth representative to the Board of Governors of the Steamship Authority. So everyone is aware, obviously, we have, this has been advertised, as Mr. Jones noted, the deadline for applications is Friday, December 27, 2013. We did get, I did get, a resignation from Mr. Marshall. Unfortunately, what had happened with that, and the reason why there was some confusion there, is that Mr. Marshall had sent it to an email address but had misspelled my name. And so it never was delivered to me, and so we never got that. That's why this has been held up for so long, that we, we didn't actually see the resignation from him. Having finally received that, though, we now have this advertised, and one of the questions that was raised, and I do believe it's here in the, at least we've been provided, I don't know if it's in our packet this evening, but there is a Steamship Authority meeting this week.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At 9:30.
At 9:30.
So interested members of the board could certainly attend. And in the past, it was noted that absent a representative, the Board of Governors will recognize the selectmen and our input, so...
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I think there will be a lot of people there tomorrow, although they're really, the only vote they're taking tomorrow on their agenda is to actually put out the, not an RFP, but it's devoted to having the design, people come in and design the parking lots. And I think what they're planning is to, on the parking lots on Thomas Landers Road, they're looking at impervious types of parking and, so, but that's all, so there's nothing really major. The one thing I would suggest, having been through this before, amazingly enough, I found my application to the Steamship Authority to be on the Board of Governors back in 2001. I totally forgot that I had even, I never submitted it, but I gave it some consideration then, and then I must have at the last minute decided not to even submit it. But I found it in a file, I couldn't believe it. I did a pretty good job. And it's a very long application, but I think one thing that we want to consider is asking the people who apply to provide us with a resume and then provide us with answers to, and these are pretty good questions to ask applicants to provide us. What are the three most important actions facing the Board of Governors? What skills do you especially bring to a Board of Governors? And how can the Board of Governors best reflect the thinking of the community? Now, those are three that obviously were, that the Board put together with Peter Boyer communicated back in 2000. And there may be other questions that we would like the applicants to provide us in writing, respond, their responses in writing. Because I think it's very helpful when each of them has their own way of responding to the issues, because we need to hear from them now that there, these plans are out there to build a parking lot on Thomas Landers Road, and now they have plans to, to actually redo the, the terminal area. I know Kevin's been involved in some of those. So my suggestion would be to send a, when we got the applications in, to send a letter out to them confirming the fact that they will provide us with a resume and a response to whatever questions we, we decide as a board that we want to have them respond to.
It was also interesting to read the mission statement and that the person who was appointed is charged to reflect the actions, in his actions, the policies of the Board of Selectmen.
Yeah.
That they are not really free to vote the way they want. They need to vote the way that matches what our policies are.
And we may want to redo this as a board and approve the policies and goals so that we see important for this representative, because this is really pretty much outdated. And you know, the Board did vote way back in the 90s, I think. They put a cap on the parking in town at the different lots, 33, 3385, I remember that. And I know it's more than that now. It's up to about 3,500 now, I think. Not, not just on Palmer Avenue, but the total parking is about that. Anyway, whatever your pleasure is, I think we should, we could ask...
It's been advertised, and the, any interested applicants should submit an application in the town manager and the selectman's office, come in, fill out an application, and as Ms. Flynn noted, resumes are always welcome. Certainly helps. Was there any other feedback from the Board?
I'd just like to say that I think that, you know, we have applications due by the 27th. I think it would be fair and reasonable to set up a timeline that we could interview and finish our appointment by the end of the month of January.
I would agree.
And so therefore move forward. I know that we've already received interest from at least two or three applicants, I know, one of which may not be available later in January, so we could try to schedule an interview with that applicant in early January. So I'll give it the benefit of the doubt, but I think it's fair to say, give ourselves a timeline, the last meeting in January, and we hope to make an appointment.
To make the appointment.
I would push it faster than that, because the Board, the Steamship Authority may be meeting on the 20th of January. And that really, if we could do this on the 6th and 13th, for us to have two meetings in a row that does not have a representative...
Or we could do one special meeting, if we wanted to, to interview the applicants, because we don't know how many there are. And then we could vote them at the next meeting, like if we did it sometime before January, when is the meeting, the 14th? No, the 13th.
The 6th and the 13th.
And the 13th, if we did it the week in between, we could interview and then we could appoint on the 13th.
Right.
If we did that. And it makes a lot easier to interview them all in one night that's totally separate.
I agree that it's an important appointment to this board, and there are a lot of things that this person must be well versed in. It's an $80 million budget, so the Steamship Authority, so I mean, we need someone who has a grip on finances as well as, as the needs of this community, has to be able to interact on a board that can sway votes from other communities as well, because we only have a 10% share in the vote. So it's important that we find someone who would be a great ambassador for our community, as well as a great ambassador on that board, to be able to convince, be convincing in what the needs of the community of Falmouth are. The dollars that they have to weigh between, if they are anyway alienating the island all of a sudden, we have no, we have no say.
And these are some statistics on the last 20 years of the annual rate of passengers, autos, and all trucks and all vehicles. And you can see where there's not much increase in passengers, but there's been some significant increases in all vehicles over the course of time.
And one of the, one of the firm things that I think would be important that we look for in the candidate is someone willing to communicate with the community, and that be folks in the local community, Woods Hall, as well as the entire Town of Falmouth, because the steamship does affect the entire Town of Falmouth, as we're going to see by Thomas Landers Road, as we see on Palmer Avenue, as we see in the Village of Woods Hall. So I think it's important that, and I think that's what's happened in the past, folks have lashed out because they haven't had an opportunity to speak to their representative.
You know, I'm going to pass these out to you. This is just, these are the responses to the questions for the candidates that was proposed by the Board of Selectmen back in 2001. And it might be, give you a little sense of history of where things were then and where they are now. I mean, you can read it at your leisure, it might give you some thoughts about what, that was my response to the Board of Selectmen's questions when I thought I was going to be a candidate.
Thank you.
But the, the other thing, I think we ought to really agree, because this is our last meeting, if we want to pursue those same questions again, if I can find out where they differ.
Well, I think the individual members...
Or do you want to make up your own questions?
The individual members, as we've always done with our applicants, we could all...
No, but I meant have them provide answers in writing so that we have those answers when we interview them, rather than just wait to ask them the questions at the time of the interview, that they would respond, these are the questions, that they would respond in writing so that you get, not only you, you get a written response, but you also have something, a basis for which to ask questions.
I'd like for us to have a discussion about if our meeting is on the 6th, to think about the 7th or the 8th as a special meeting. That would be the Tuesday and Wednesday in the first week of January.
And why would we have a special meeting?
If you think we can manage it with everything else with the budget on the 6th or 13th, that's fine. But I, I just don't know how time-consuming, because there's a great interest in this position. And if we just had a special meeting without the agenda of the selectmen. But if, if your feeling is, we can go through all of this and the agenda with the budget?
Well, I think we'll, we'll see on the 27th how many applications we have, because obviously, there's a lot of interest, there's a lot of people talking about it, but that doesn't necessarily indicate how many applications we're going to have. We could have a dozen applications, we could have two or three. We'll see how many applications we have as of the 27th. We'll schedule interviews, anticipate scheduling interviews for the 6th, with the hope that we might be able to get through them the 6th, if not have any additional interviews on the 13th and a vote at that time.
If, if we were to get four applicants, that's two hours right there in interviews, and I know we have the whole budget.
A half an hour in interview?
Well, for the Steamship Authority, it could well be.
Probably.
That's why I think if you get them...
I don't see how mixing the two. I don't see it on a, I think we need to say to people as they're applying that we have a date and a time for them to come in. And putting that on an agenda night, especially when we're talking about budget, is really putting too much...
Well, all right.
The, I, I still think it will help a great deal if we send out those questions and ask them to respond in writing. It gives you, it could make the interviews go faster.
Well, and I'm not, I don't disagree with that, but I don't know necessarily whether those are the questions we want to send out.
No, I understand that.
Yeah, some are dated.
Let's come up with the timeline, and then we'll talk about the questions. What do you think?
Honestly, I think it's, it's a little late for us to be coming up with questions at this point when we're not going to be having another meeting. I mean, how much time do we want to be sitting here debating what questions we're going to have?
You can send them by email and people could send them back.
I mean, we could just give a very broad question. What do you think, let me look at your other questions before I just...
That's 11 years ago, so, I mean, things were different 11 years ago.
Yeah, there's many things that are different. Now, refresh my memory, Mr. Marshall, has he been serving for the past 11 years?
11 years.
Okay.
And I think question number two is still relatively...
What's that?
Skills.
What skills does he especially bring to the Board of Governors?
Have him put them in writing.
Right, well, I don't have a problem with it, that's what I'm saying. And then question number three, how can... And then question number three, how can the Board of Governors best reflect the thinking of all communities? I think they just take out the word "all communities" to Falmouth.
Yeah.
So how about this, what if we tick these questions and any applicant who comes in, fills out an application, we give them these and ask them to provide us with answers? And then they can supplement their.
And the first question is, what are the three most important actions facing the Board of Governors this next year?
Yeah, I think those are relevant, yeah.
That's right, yeah.
It makes them have to look.
But I think we need a date and a time, so they will know, so they will know that when they have their application in here by the 27th of December, they also know the date and the time of when they will be interviewed with questions.
January 6th.
And the other thing that's really important that, that this is, suppose you get five or six applicants, that could take up the whole night.
I was just going to say, we have a huge agenda in January.
We have a huge agenda.
If we get that many, well, believe me, folks, I'll keep you informed of everything that's going on. We'll see how long it's going to take to go through the budget, we'll see how long, how many applicants we have for this. If we have to spec, if we have to have a special meeting that week, then so be it.
And I think what we do is do the January 6th as the interview night. And if we need to make the budget January 8th, as our special meeting.
Make the budget, well.
The week beforehand, we can.
Well, remember, we have a huge timeline in the budget, it has to be sent to the Finance Committee by the 15th.
As long as it's the same week.
15th?
I can't make the 7th, but I can make the 8th.
I can't make the 8th, but I can make the 7th.
Well, actually, you just said it, the budget doesn't need to go to the Finance Committee until the 15th. So we have the 6th and we have the 13th, we have two Mondays before that 15th deadline. So I don't, at this point, I think it's a little premature to be talking about an additional meeting. I think we have time here to work with, but we'll see how many applications we have coming in.
Okay.
And if, and if it happens at the end of the month, that it looks like we're going to be overwhelmed, then I'll reach out to the Board and say, listen, maybe we need to schedule something extra.
Okay, so maybe the next thing is, we can suggest this. It's a little late, for some folks I know who've already sent us a letter, expressed an interest, anyone we get an application from that we ask them to answer those three questions?
And mail their responses to the Board by a certain date.
Could anyone who applies gets a letter from us saying we've scheduled interviews on this date?
Right.
And in that letter.
They can send them there.
They get this.
Right, please, please answer these three questions in writing.
It's the only copy I have.
Okay, let's make sure the Town Manager has that.
I'll make sure that, I'll make a copy and make sure.
And could I?
Oh, you have one.
Ms. Flynn, could I, just for a moment, just so the public is aware of what we're talking about. There are three questions, and we're going to be asking these, these are, the consensus that I'm hearing from the Board, is that we're going to be asking for answers in writing for these questions. So if you're applying for the Steamship Authority Board of Governors position, what are the three most important actions facing the Board of Governors this next year? What skills do you especially bring to the Board of Governors? And how can the Board of Governors best reflect the thinking of Falmouth? All right?
Mm-hmm.
So we'll be asking for answers to those in writing. If you've not applied yet, if you have applied, we'll be getting you this, and we'll be asking for that in return. And then we're looking at January 6th for the beginning of those interviews, and if we have to schedule additional dates based on the volume, we will. Any questions or comments from the public? All right. All right, so the next time, our, next item on our agenda, special events policy. And I apologize to the Board, I'm going to perhaps upset a few folks right now, but I'm going to make sure that, I want to make sure that everybody understands. I was away this past week on vacation, and I got home late last night. I looked at the special events policy earlier today. We had committed to the general public that we would provide the most recent draft on the Town's website, and it was not on the Town's website. So we certainly can have a discussion this evening about the special events policy, but I'm not going to entertain a motion to pass this this evening, because we did not fulfill our request to, the request that the folks made to us, that the public made to us, that they see the draft that we were working with, the last draft that is currently available on the Town's website was last updated on October 18, which is two months old. So we can begin a discussion with the event, special events policy, but I am not going to entertain any motions to pass it this evening. Ms. Flynn provided us with the update, as she promised.
No, don't.
Oh.
Yeah, Heather did it.
Oh, okay.
And I didn't realize she had done it, so forget mine, hers is better than mine. So discard mine and use hers.
All right.
Okay?
So we'll discard this. Thank you for that update.
You're welcome.
And so in our packet then?
For clarification, it's not my draft, it only reflects the request of the Board.
Okay.
Well, whoever did it, it's better than my draft, so discard mine. Mine is too wordy.
Heather followed my direction, and then I removed the references to the land as to what was happening in different spaces, and just made references to the time of the year.
Okay.
And so under 2.1, it talks about the special consideration during the months of July and August.
I like this.
I can live with it.
Do you?
I'm not sure this is out there in the public, so.
It is not. But yeah, if you'd like to read the, the significant changes.
And so there's no mention of Town Hall Square, of Village Green, or of Pagnunin Park in the policy at any time. It does talk about how the special events policy is to establishing a policy to govern special events, or use public roads closed upon request in the all municipal parks, grounds, and beaches. The addition that we came, that I came up with is during the months of July and August, approval of special events will be made only after careful consideration of the effect that the event will have on parking and traffic congestion in the proposed area. For example, special events in the main streets of the villages of Falmouth will be given careful consideration and will be avoided, if at all possible, during July and August.
I can live with that. So can we have this draft posted on the Town's website?
Yes.
So we can make that commitment to the general public. Any questions or comments?
Just one, one other thing, I think it's important to note, that this policy does take the referral away that folks were concerned about in regard to specific village associations. It just leaves any permitting department quiet based on the event proposed, including but not limited to Recreation Building Commissioner, Design Review, Health Department, and the Beach Department.
Right.
Period.
As we had discussed, yeah.
It does not talk about the task force making recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. It's just leaving things as.
Task force?
Ah, just making the decisions, is that correct?
Task force?
It's that internal, internal working group.
Oh, 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 the internal working group, yes. But it's, but it's implied, is it not? As the, as a delegated permitting authority?
No, it does not.
It's not implied?
No, this, this, this draft removes the discussion of any delegation of authority.
Oh, it does?
It does.
Why are we doing?
That was the only part that I.
But it talks about permitting authorities.
Must be approved by a vote of the permitting authority, which is the Board of Selectmen.
So we're going back to doing them all again?
Well, as I mentioned last time, one of the things we talked about was probably establishing some criteria to determine if there's something, a repeating event that never changes, that it could be approved by the Town Manager's Office.
Can, can we put in one line, just one additional line from Pats? And it says, "The Town Manager's Special Events Staff Working Group will provide its recommendations to the Board," period.
Period, and that's.
Just provide its recommendations to the Board. We can add that here on, on this.
Under two.
Under two, maybe begin, it's the, right after.
Make it a third paragraph, under two, before you get to special considerations?
Right.
And that implies that there is a, a working group, that it's going to review?
That it will make its recommendations to the Board.
And make recommendations, yeah, and approve all the events.
Right.
I like that, that's very good.
You were talking about simple earlier tonight, and I think that's very simple. In other words, we get all these recommendations, but we don't have one final recommendation, and that's from the Town Manager's Office.
Okay, that's great.
All right. Any objections to adding that? Any questions or comments from the Board then?
No, it gives us a lot more time with that meeting on the 6th, because everybody's queued up to wait for permits.
Well, it's the nature of our business.
I know, I'm just saying.
Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on this?
Yeah, Mark Finer in Precinct 6. I just wondered, that line you just added in there about the working group or Town Manager's Office offering their opinion, viewpoint, whatever it may be, is that going to be part of the public record?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
And any chance the farmers markets getting grandfathered in here?
There's nothing here that grandfathers any.
Just checking.
What it does is that it outlines the, the process, I think it's fair to say. And the draft that's online is not substantially different from what we have here, but as promised during our last meeting, we want to make sure that the draft we're working with is the draft that's available online. So we're not, like I said, we're not going to take a vote this evening on this, we'll make sure that this, with the most recent change, is put online. We'll have this as an agenda item in January, and maybe we'll be able to get it passed at that point. All right, any further questions or comments from the public?
I'm the Falmouth Farmers Market Manager. I did have a couple questions about the policy language itself, and was wondering, under the, the limits of delegated authority, which I realize you have the working group, but it sounds like you're going to review everything anyway.
That, that section has been removed.
Oh, the whole thing has been, okay.
Yes.
Let me just ask something that might pertain anyway, as it moves forward. So you have, most of these events that have, that come before you are single day events. We happen to be, the farmer's market happens to be one of those unique multi-day events. There are others, obviously, in town, but they are one of the main ones. So I'm wondering, when the fourth line here that refers to events charging goods or services at Pagnunin Park, are there any others other than the Falmouth Farmers Market that that particular line applies to?
There are, but that section has been removed from the latest draft.
Okay.
Which is.
But it's part of the development of your thinking of the policy, so it is sort of germane, even though that particular section's.
Well, there are, well, for example, the, what's that called? The artisans' fair, the Cultural Survival Festival, that's what I'm thinking of. There are other events that do charge, not necessarily entrance fees, but sell goods there.
Sales, right, exactly, okay. And I was just wondering if there are, I meant to look myself, but could you tell me other events that have similar broad, multi-day, you know, impacts to the town that, I was just kind of curious what other ones are.
Without looking, I don't know if there's anyone else can come up with something.
They have the, the car show that, but it's not, it's at the Band Shell, it's on a multi-day.
That's right, too, yeah. At Marina Park, there's a car show that happens during multiple weekends throughout the summer, yes.
All right, I just couldn't, I was trying to remember, and I know we're sort of like the art, arts and crafts thing that happens in Town Hall Square.
That's another one, yes.
Okay.
The Commodores is another one that does, in some ways, fit into the multi-day use of town property.
But they have a contract with the Town.
Yeah, they have a memory and of, of understanding with the Town.
Was that the village association?
The, no, the Commodores.
Oh, right, right, okay. Well, anyway, sort of shifting gears a little bit, obviously, a lot of the special events is, as we've talked over the many, you know, last couple meetings, affects the farmer's market pretty significantly. And I wanted to make a couple points, some are, trying not to repeat too much of things that we've talked about before, but again, we really were hoping to, we know you're developing this policy, but we're hoping that, and sort of in light of our uniqueness, that the regular event kind of application might be considered in the, in a broad, sort of the broad, multi-use, multi-day aspect of who we are and what we bring to the town and what we're doing. And one of the other previous comments about the success of the farmer's market and how, you know, sort of unintended consequences, you might consider parking and traffic pressures that come from that. But again, the success that we have had and that we, that has happened from that is because of the broad support of the town, of not just previously, historically, through the town boards here, but through your constituents, through the town. I mean, they love this event, and I think that shows that they're willing to come to town, as we've expressed before, but.
Point's well taken.
Right. So what I'm wondering, too, with this, and sort of two more quick points, with the special events policy finalization, what I'm wondering is, does that, does this policy preclude the Falmouth Farmers Market from, from their existing application being approved? Because it is on hold, okay.
And, and again, I'll remind you, what I said last time, is that last year, this past year, the farmer's market, the Striper Fest, the, the Falmouth Road Race, they were all approved in the January, February timeframe. So I would not suggest that this is holding anything up, other than the fact that the Board wanted to try to finalize this before we moved on to some of those events. But a lot of the language that may have been specific to concerns that you're raising has now been removed, so.
Okay. Well, I kind of feel like I have to put this out here a bit, because it could, could change your decision-making when the application does finally come in front of you. So this three-year incubation period, things of that nature that are very specific to the process, we're hoping that when the application does come in front of you, that those restrictions do not get necessarily applied in this upcoming year, hopefully the three-year policy, you know, timeframe that you've put in this policy.
Yeah, I do, yeah, I do think the, the incubation period is also, that language has also been removed.
I'm sorry.
No, and that's quite all right. And this is why we want to make sure that the draft that we're working with is out on the website, available to the public. And you could even, if you wanted to, go into the Town Manager's Office and ask for a copy, if you, if you can't get it off the website. But yeah, that's why we want to make sure that everybody has that, so we're all talking about the same thing.
Okay. Well, just real quick, though, as, as, when we do finally come in front of the Board for the review of our existing application, and we've talked in our original presentation back in November, how things, you know, might be, what alternatives might be suggested, or how the application gets worked. And I would just like to submit an idea that when we come in front of you finally, that the feasibility study of the farmer's market and its location and consideration of alternate siting, not be the framework necessarily of us being denied, that application being denied, but as, as a jump-off point for how the farmer's market might be relocated, even though that's not what we want, that's not what we're seeking, but that we work towards that, that has to be the ultimate condition and situation down the road. But to do it in the situation to, on the fly, as you said earlier, too, with a very short window, if we're not coming in front of you until January, February, that is an extreme pressure on us and our vendors to have to try to respond in insanely short window. So our application came to you in September, and it's now, you know, we're not going to be in front of you again until January, it looks like. So that's, that's a significant burden on us and our vendors, because they need to plant and prepare.
Well, and again, but we've said before, there was, there's no doubt that you're going to be approved. There's just the questions that have arisen over the last few months about, is it going to continue to be in Pagnunin Park in whole or in part? So plan on being approved.
Location is a key point that we're trying to make, obviously.
Understood.
To move is a huge burden, because of all the siting needs that we would have, and there's no way the town, as you talked about the library and things like that, and just trying to do a feasibility study, you know, they're asking that for, they've got a year in advance just to do a feasibility study, and we're that same, we're in process. So we would need a feasibility study to figure out with the town, to get the capital, to find another suitable location that would make it still a success and would not cause an undue burden.
Maybe worthwhile for us to have a conversation on the side to, to try to iron out some of these issues before the application comes before the full Board.
I would appreciate that time.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on the special events policy? Any other questions or comments on the special events policy? All right. So, the next item on our agenda, we have the 2014 Annual License Renewals. We'll go through these page by page. Or actually, we'll go section by section, actually, some of these are rather long.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, just to make a blanket disclosure that I'm a holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license. Tonight, we're going to be discussing some all-alcoholic club licenses, alcoholic restaurant licenses, and on-premise wine and beer malt licenses. I'd like to make that disclosure before we discuss those.
Okay, thank you. All right, oh, we're looking for, these are renewals, so we'll be looking for a motion to approve the renewals.
Will approval for the renewals?
Uh, let's go, section by section.
For the all-alcoholic retail package store license, John's Liquor Store.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the first one, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? And the all-alcoholic club licenses?
Remove approval for the Cape Verdean Club, Falmouth Post 70, Falmouth Rod and Gun, Minway Trappin' Skeet, Police Athletically, and the Portuguese American Association.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make approval of the following licenses, but I would like to abstain from two of the licenses, I will not make a motion for them. I make a motion to approve Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Falmouth Jade, Liam McGuire's, Oysters Two, Steve's, Steve's Stone Lovin' Pizza, Three of a Kind.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second for the all-alcoholic restaurant licenses for the Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Falmouth Jade, Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, Oysters Two, Stone Lovin' Pizza, and Three of a Kind. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Remove approval of the Quicks Hole Boathouse and the Fusion Grill.
Second.
For all-alcohol restaurant license.
Motion and a second for the Quicks Hole Boathouse and the Fusion Grill all-alcoholic restaurant licenses. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
One abstention.
Mr. Murphy abstains. Wine and malt restaurant licenses?
Remove approval of Bean and Cod, Jimmy Brown's Cafe, and Steve's Pizzeria.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Wine and malt club license for St. Anthony's Club?
Remove approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Wine and malt package store license for White's Automotive Center.
Remove approval.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, on discussion, if you could explain to me what the White's Automotive Center is?
This is the gas station that's at the corner of Palm, at the Palmer, the Palmer Avenue Lights, there's a small convenience store there.
Okay.
Further discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Common Victualler license?
Remove approval of Bean and Cod, Betsy's Diner, Sea Salt Wine Bar and Grill, Coon Messett Farm, Cupcapes of Falmouth, Dana's Kitchen, Dogs and Hogs, Dunkin' Donuts 614 Main Street, Dunkin' Donuts 634 Holly Park Road, North Falmouth, Dunkin' Donuts 208 T-Ticket Highway, T-Ticket, Dunkin' Donuts 363 East South Highway, Falmouth Jade, Falmouth Percy's Place, Falmouth Post 70, and I'll wait, I'll do the next page, a second.
There is one carryover, Molly's Tea Room.
And, yeah, Molly's Tea Room.
In that same category, yeah.
Well, I know, I thought the next category, they're all in the same category, next page.
Well, yeah, let's, actually, it's all common Victualler, do you want to continue and just carry over?
Sure. Munich's Cafe, Oysters Two, Papagino's, Fusion Grill, Primetime House of Pizza in 338 East South Highway, Primetime House of Pizza, 286 Old Main Road, North Falmouth, Quicks Hole Boathouse, Jimmy Brown's Cafe, 7-Eleven, Steve's Pizzeria, Stone Lovin' Pizza, Subway, Supreme Pizza, and Three of a Kind.
Second.
That was the Subway 236 T-Ticket Highway, by the way.
So, we have motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Class-one used car dealers.
Remove approval of O'Hara Motors and Falmouth Pier 37.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Class-two used car dealers.
Remove approval of Costa's Auto Body, Falmouth Auto Sales, Falmouth Collision, Frank's Auto Sales, Executive Auto, Rainy Trucking and Repair, Route 28 Auto Center, T-Ticket Auto Body, and Eacote Auto Sales.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Class-three, Falmouth Salvage.
Remove approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Limousines, top-notch limousine.
Remove approval.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Livery licenses?
Do we know what the amount is on that one? Are the other ones that we did have the, what the license amount actually is?
A dollar figure.
Don't know.
Okay. I don't think we needed for approval, but I was just curious, I should have looked it up.
It could be the same, the limousines and the taxis are both $50, it could be the same.
Okay. I was just curious as to, there was some duplication. Okay, I move approval for Livery KB Transportation and Weber Livery Service.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Taxi.
Remove approval of AA Taxi and Falmouth Taxi.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. And the automatic amusement device licenses.
I move approval for Falmouth Post 70, Quicks Hole Boathouse, and Papagino's.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. And finally, the entertainment licenses.
I move approval of the Cape Verdean Club, Coon Messett Farm, Falmouth Jade, Falmouth Post 70, Liam McGuire's Irish Pub, Oysters Two, Fusion Grill, the Portuguese American Association, Quicks Hole Boathouse, St. Anthony's Club, Stone Lovin' Pizza, and Three of a Kind.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous.
I'd like to ask one question on the used car dealers. Rainy Trucking and Repair, is 9 Hayway Road in East Falmouth in a residential area?
Uh, it is in East Falmouth, I don't know if it's residentially zoned, I do know that if, it's been there for a long, long time.
I know, yeah, but it's, but I'm asking how it's, it's still, if it's residential?
That's a good question, I don't, off the top of my head, no, I don't know.
Okay, well, let's check into that.
Probably is not, but we don't know for sure.
Yeah, it could be one of those properties that was spot-zoned years ago that...
Well, let's find out.
All right, individual selectmen's reports, anything, anyone would like to comment on? Mr. Murphy?
I do, um, I, a couple of things, first of all, many of us marched in the parade, I think it was a wonderful event, I have never seen such a turnout as this year, the roads were absolutely packed, it was such a wonderful event, and I take my hat off to folks coming out for the 50th celebration of it. It was great to see everybody there, but I just, I was dumbfounded, how many people were there this year, I've never seen that size of crowd.
And one of the coldest days, too.
Right, you're right, it was a cold day. One other thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention, I attended the Cape Cod Selectmen and Councils meeting this past Friday, and there were folks from further down in the Cape, Brewster, and Chatham, who started a coalition of selectmen to deal with issues on beaches, specifically, in their case, they had beach closures, seven miles of beach with the piping plobas this past year. What they found was they put together a group of towns, who had each, each town had a selectman on it, they were able to get past the local, the local folks from the endangered species group, as well as marine fisheries and fish and game, and they were able to start a dialogue and work with these folks in regard to the idea and the, the idea and the ideal that the public needs to also have access as, at the same time that, that we're trying to protect these endangered species, so they've started to make inroads. One of the things that came up was the fact that there are a lot of communities, i.e. like Falmouth, that don't allow vehicles on beaches, but we were, in our discussion, we were talking about how the rack line, it eliminates us from raking on the rack line, and many communities have the same type of concern. So, what they're actually asking, they wanted to see whether they could come and make a presentation to our board about us putting a representative on this group who'll continue to work to be able to change state and federal minds that, in areas where we want some public access, and I know we've spoken, a couple of weeks ago, we had a planning board meeting, and the frustration that we can't take care of our beaches, specifically our public beaches in the way we want to because of these other regulations. So, with you, Mr. Chairman, I wanted to coordinate in the future, allowing the selectmen to put together this group, for them to come and present to us that we can maybe ultimately, you know, name a participant who would work on our town's behalf, and there is strength with numbers, they've seen this already, and I hope that we could continue to move that dialogue, I think it would be something great for the town to be able to help them, and then they help Falmouth when we want to change some of the, the regulations, both state and federal. With that being said, I don't, we'll talk about, I'm sure, the planning board meeting, which I thought was a wonderful meeting, our joint meeting with the planning board, I think it worked out great, and the last thing that I would like to say is that I want to wish everybody in this community a wonderful holiday, whether you call it Christmas, whether you call it Kwanzaa, whatever you might do, I hope you enjoy it to the utmost, and I think it's a wonderful community that provides that diversity, that everybody can enjoy whatever holiday they do celebrate, and on behalf of myself, I'd like to wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Anyone else?
I would just like to comment on the meeting with the planning board, and I know that not all of us were there, but I thought it was one of the best meetings that I've attended in a long time. There was great participation on every member of the planning board and the, and the selectmen who were there, there was some audience participation, not a lot, but it was, it was, there was no tension, there was, it was just really nice, all the way through from beginning to end, we got a lot out on the table, and we, there's a follow-up meeting coming up because we all agreed that we needed to do some more work, but one thing we had to learn about was the transfer of development rights, that even the planning board is not that much aware of it, but I thought it was a really good meeting, and I think they're planning a follow-up in the very near future, is that our understanding of that?
Yes, we are, we are.
Yeah, so that was, so, very good.
I want to follow up on Mr. Murphy's comment about the parade, the night before, the lighting of the green, certainly as someone who grew up in town, I'd never remembered that being an event, or a big event, it was as, I mean, the entire green was packed with people, and the whole, have the community up, and that was wonderful. I did some very fruitful channel surfing last week and saw some of the planning board's meeting and their discussion of our meeting, and as we look at our January schedule, they're hoping we do have a workshop with them, possibly on a Saturday, and I think the sooner we do that, the better, both for the CPC's point of view for, for that project, for the spring breath project, and also to build on the positive momentum that we had a good meeting to begin with and to have another meeting very soon. And the other item I was watching was the school committee, and it's a reason why you have extensive information in your packet, the one thing I did want to point out that they're very concerned about is the current, the way they're looking at their budget needs because of their increase in their salaries and because of their out-of-district funds, they're seeing that they're right now starting with a $1.5 million deficit, and I think it's good that we have a little bit of heads up about that, they're going to have to do some work about it, but just so that you're, I know you're aware that they are very concerned about that.
I just want to remind everyone, and the general public as well, next month, January, because of budget, because of some of the other obligations we were talking about with interviews for the Steamship Authority, we are going to be meeting every possible Monday, the 20th is Martin Luther King Day, we won't be meeting that day, but the 6th, the 13th, and the 27th of January, we will be meeting, and of course, there may be an additional meeting with the, the planning board, depending on how that works out. Are there any questions about Mr. Suso's report?
Um, yes. The annual town, the annual meeting of the Mass Municipal Association, we had the same type of a notification for all of us, and I was just, if anyone else is interested in going, I'm asking.
Well, I am going, but I'm going through the county.
Okay.
I saved the town money.
I'd be considerate, I haven't, I have not really looked at the schedule yet, but I know I went lost here and I thought it was very helpful.
Yeah, well, it's the 24th and 25th, so all I'm saying is that, in this notification for the registration of that, whether we need to commit.
What's the, it's the 27th?
Well, it's the 24th and the 25th.
No, I mean, our meeting, something, I know when the...
Our meeting is, 27th is the last Monday of January.
Oh.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just note, any members of the board, that who'd be interested in registering, attending, anything we can do to assist, we're certainly happy to do that, I can assure you that, as a, as town manager, I found that very personally rewarding, a number of work sessions and other informative opportunities, and I know all members of the board have seen that, have been able to attend, it's always a daunting schedule at different times as well.
Just clear one other thing about it, not only the, the schedule of workshops, but the networking and speaking to other folks who do the same jobs as we do in other communities was probably as insightful as any one of the workshops you might have had, having a coffee with somebody, explaining how they do things differently in other communities, I thought that was really, really informative.
And I might add, too, that the, our Cape Selectmen's Association meets during that, during the MMA meeting, too, they usually meet at 5:00 on Friday night in one of the meetings, and go over some of their, well, they go over some of their testimony that they present at the annual meeting, but the speakers at this annual meeting, John Meacham, who wrote book on Thomas Jefferson, is the, is the keynote speaker, and I've forgotten who the other two are, but they're, anyway, so I think it should be a good meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of, including supplementary items to my report, if I may, I did want to acknowledge, given the members of the board a copy of a, a letter of support from Cape Cod Commission Executive Director Paul Nitz Wiki to the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan effort, a very positive, highly supportive letter, and we appreciate very much Paul Nitz Wiki's support for that process, as the board is aware, is a very challenging process, we're in the midst of, working with the Wastewater Management Committee, and we look forward to continuing to make all efforts in that regard, so we appreciate that support. I also want to note, was very pleased to participate in the holiday lighting of the town common, as well as the 50th Annual Christmas Parade, Stephanie and I were delighted to be part of that, as a reminder to the board, pursuant to the town charter, we'll be transmitting to the board the FY15 proposed budget for your consideration within the next two weeks, and lastly, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and with that, I think we're ready to adjourn.
Wow. A lot early, a little hot, too, I thought we'd be hit on midnight.
I agree, too.
I'd like to follow up on what's been said several times, the board is not meeting again before the holidays, we're not going to be meeting again until January 6th, so I'd like to wish you all here with us this evening, and all of those at home, a very Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and I would call for a motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned the open session, do we need to also close the...
That's right, too, they have an executive session to close as well, and I, we have no feedback, so, all right, so a motion to adjourn open session, as well as the executive So a motion to adjourn open session, as well as the executive session.
Second.
Did you make the motion? Oh, all right, I'll make the motion.
Second. Okay. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Merry Christmas, ladies and gentlemen.
And I'm Margaret Gifford, and we're from Sotheby's International Realty in Falmouth.
The holidays are coming, my friend. What are your thoughts?
Yes, they are, and a great gift would be a house.
Oh, people should give each other houses. Super idea. And what a boon for mortgage people and accountants.
And insurance people.
And contractors.
And plumbers.
Oh, a house is a good idea. And you know why?
Why?
Because a house is.
A gift that keeps on giving.